We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle.
Here.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mayor Gantz.
Here. If we will have everyone please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have approval of the city commission meeting minutes for the regular city commission meeting for December 5th, 2017?
Motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Acknowledgement of our city board minutes for the non-uniform pension board meeting minutes for May 18th, 2017, and August 11th, 2017, our cultural committee meeting minutes from October 16th and November 20th of 2017, code compliance hearing minutes from October 10th, 2017, our marine advisory board meeting minutes from April 20th, 2017, June 15th, 2017, September 25th, 2017, and October 19th, 2017, planning and zoning board meeting minutes for November 2nd, 2017, and our community appearance board meeting minutes from November 8th and November 29th of 2017.
I make a motion to acknowledge all those mentioned board meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Not seeing any. Approval of our city commission meeting agenda for January 16th, 2018, including our addendums.
Motion to approve, including addendum A1 and A2 and A3.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passing unanimously. Our presentations, Commissioner Miller, we're gonna let you do the honors on this first one.
Okay. I'm very proud, someone in the audience, a young hero, and I'd like him to come forward with his parents if he would, Derek Pagoda. Come on down, Derek. I have something for you, I wanna come down, let me come down. Derek's a second grader, and from Deerfield Park, Deerfield Beach Elementary. Derek was playing near his dad, and his dad collapsed, young man that is. Derek stayed cool, ran in, called 911, paramedics came, revived his dad, and hereby is with his dad tonight because of his quick thinking and the paramedic's safety procedures. Thank you very much, young man, and we recognize you. Derek, let's get a picture, and I have this certificate for Derek. Derek, why don't you look over here, young lady, through the newspaper, and mom and dad get with him. Come on. At the end of the presentation, alright, well, let me read the certificate of recognition for being an on-demand hero as you've saved the life of your father. A hero is an extraordinary individual who finds a strength to persevere and endure in spite of overwhelming obstacles. God bless you, sir. Sir, young man, I'm proud of you. That's it, this is for you. Hang on a little while. Thank you, very good.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Derek. Our next item on the agenda is a certificate of appreciation, and what we will do is after all the presentations, we're just gonna briefly bring the commissioners down to the floor, take some photos, and then come right back up. We would like to, the city of Deerfield Beach extends our deepest gratitude for our contributions through 30 years of service to our city. The unending dedication, hard work, and commitment has been appreciated by all of us here, and as you set sail on your retirement, we wish you the best in your future endeavors, Mr. Alastair Plank. Thank you, Alastair. We have another retirement, and this one's a sad one for all of us as well, and he's not here tonight, so we won't embarrass him too much, but Sergeant Lamar Williams. This certificate of appreciation is presented to Lamar Williams for 40 years of service. Sergeant, yes. Sergeant Lamar Williams moved to Deerfield Beach where he was raised and grew up since the age of one. He attended Deerfield Beach Elementary School, Deerfield Beach Middle School, and Deerfield Beach High School. He graduated from Deerfield Beach High in 1976. In October of 1977, he was hired by the city of Deerfield Beach Police Department. As a patrolman, he worked as a traffic specialist and investigated traffic homicides. In June of 1982, was promoted to the rank of sergeant and supervised many units to include Marine Patrol and field training coordinator. In 1993, Sergeant Williams was selected as the Broward Sheriff's Office Deerfield Beach Deputy of the Year for his efforts as the training coordinator. We honor him tonight for his 40 years of service. Chief, if we could have the commission just step down here for a quick photo, please. If we could have the media take their seats again or step outside, please, so we can move forward. Our quasi-judicial hearings, Mr. Maronis.
Quasi-judicial hearings are items four, five, and A1. Anybody want to put a testimony on any of the items? Would you please stand and let me introduce the deal to your colleagues, which is only trying to be helpful for us. We will go to item number four, with the ordinance, the ordinance, Mayor, notice to the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, rezoning approximately 109 acres located at 3810 Crystal Lake Drive and 3941 Northwest 9th Avenue from open space and public recreation and RM 25 residence, multi-family, the planned unit development district, providing for a maximum of 415 dwelling units with no more than 125 townhome units, providing for development regulations and other requirements applicable to the PUD. Is there a presentation, or is the applicant here, and does the applicant wish to waive the quasi-judicial procedure?
Good evening, Dennis Mealy, 200 East Broward Boulevard. On behalf of the applicant, we'll waive the quasi-judicial procedure. And Mr. Mayor and Attorney, I know the next two items are related to this, do you want me to just present everything one time?
Oh, yeah, I think with the commission, this is the rezoning and approving of a master plan, basically. Item number five is the actual site plan, and item A1A is the resolution approving a development agreement for certain improvements, off-site improvements. So, I think it would be appropriate, unless the applicant disagrees, to hear them all in one time, they will be voted on separately, but you hear them all one time, and again, if you had questions separately on, before the vote on the others, you definitely could ask them, but I think it would be economical to do it that way.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a couple of quick items, you may recall, we were originally scheduled for last month, and we tabled till today because we wanted to finalize the development agreement, which is item 1A. The development agreement provides for us to build the turn lane at Green Road that we had previously had to verify there was sufficient right-of-way for and that the county would approve. The county has signed off on the turn lane design, and the right-of-way is there, so we were able to confirm that. Secondly, we had to finalize the requirements for the construction of the EMS station. You may recall that with one of my other clients, we built a recreational building, that was a lot easier, and EMS station has special requirements, special construction, special equipment, so we wanted to make sure we got that completely tied down before we brought it back to you, and we have done that now.
So, by the email, we have confirmed that the development agreement that we'll be adopting tonight is acceptable.
That's correct, and, you know, it was just, an EMS station has a bunch of special requirements, so we had to make sure.
And we appreciate the development cooperation, I think we were very specific on what we wanted, and we worked out and figured out the cooperation very effectively.
And then the only thing I wanted to really add on the site plan, you recall that in the land use amendment, it's a maximum of 415 units with no more than 125 townhomes, we actually have 122 townhomes, so we reduced the number of townhomes by three, we increased the number of single-family homes by three, still for the maximum of 415, but it's a little bit more single-family and a little bit less townhome. Other than that, I have slides I could show, but it really matches what you saw when we had the land use amendment, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, if there's any public comment, like the opportunity to respond is appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comments from the commission before we open to the public? Not seeing anyone right now, open this up to the public, anyone from the public care to speak on this item? Or these items, I should say. Not seeing anyone, or not seeing anyone in the closed, the public portion to be heard. Commission comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve, number four.
Commissioner Drosky, before Vice Mayor Miller makes that motion.
Just one quick question for the applicant. I had mentioned at a previous meeting that I would like you to consider putting in the declaration of, not this developer's agreement, but a future agreement to restrict, you know, the rentals to ownership, you know, to two years, is that something you've talked to your client with, and is that something that is probably not appropriate for this agreement, but is there a representation you can make going forward?
So, you're asking for, that someone lived there a minimum of two years before they rent, I'm not sure, I wanna make sure I understand.
That's what we, I had proposed last time, yes, correct, just a rental restriction, so it's not a in-and-out community.
Give me one second. Commissioner, I apologize, I'm gonna have to get back to you on that.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes. Again, I'm against this project because I feel my constituents who live in the area don't want it, and based on that, I will be voting no. I feel listening to one's constituents is what we're paid to do. Thank you.
And as a representative of the entire city, not only District 1, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We're gonna take them one at a time, so we're gonna go for a motion to approve for item number four?
Yes.
We have a second? We have a motion and a second, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle.
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
No.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes. Item number five. Anyone from the public care to speak on item number five? Your name, address, city, and state, please.
My name's Joe Hines, I'm at 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. On item number five, section number two, there's a statement there that says, "Developer based upon direction by the city or authorized BSO representative shall design the EMS building according to the EMS building plans." There's no building plans included in these documents, there is a sort of a floor plan rendering, but there is no plan, so if plans are gonna be mentioned in this document, they should be included in it, I believe, because there's an obligation there on both sides for that. The, when you go over to the, let's see, there's another section here that says, talks about additional work by the, at the finish of the job fixtures and so on and so forth, and it sounds like it's an agreement with the city to give the developer the right to finish up the inside of this building without going out to public bid across the board on that interior work. It seems like you go into contract with him on an overall project, and you don't even know what the costs are, so that sort of confused me, that wording in there. Another thing that you have included is a breakdown of everything that goes in that, in that building, and one of those things in that building is a fire alarm system. Now, that's the fire department, and these people are cross-trained, and these are all firemen, and it's not, it's not a requirement by NFPA 72, 2010, that you put a fire alarm system in that building, and that's gonna be a substantial cost, $50,000 to $100,000, I would estimate, probably closer to $100,000. I think y'all might have taken a look at that, too, before that's, you know, installed. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone in close, Mr. Mealy?
Thank you, I just wanted to respond briefly. The provision, in the agreement, it provides for us to build the building, it provides for us to put in the majority of the equipment and so on, it gives you the right to ask us to have our contractor do certain work for you, but you don't have to do that. The additional work, you can do it yourself, you can bid it out, or you can ask us to do it, it's your option.
It's an option that was supposed to be appropriate, however, we have someone globalized on the scene, and just for clarification, you'll be, the next item will be approving a development agreement which attaches details and plans, and as much detail as we could get at this point on that. So, we, frankly, the reason it was postponed a month is we wanted to pin down all the details so that when it was approved, we would know exactly what we were getting, and the agreement at A1 does that. But you're not, you're not at that point yet, and it is an add-on, and fair enough.
City clerk, do you, you have your light on, is there, do you need?
Yeah, I have the disclosures.
Go right ahead.
The disclosures for item number five have been revised and will be added to the permanent copy of the agenda backup. Pursuant to the City of Deerfield Beach Code of Ethics ordinance 2009006, the law firm of Green Spoon Water made campaign contributions to Mayor Bill Gantz and Commissioner Todd Drosky in the amount of $500 in January 2017. Green Spoon Water also made contributions to Vice Mayor Joseph Miller in July 2014 in the amount of $500. Equity Land Title made contributions to Mayor Bill Gantz and Commissioner Drosky, $500 in January 2017. Vice Mayor Joseph Miller, $500 in July 2014. Hoyer Homes made campaign contributions to Mayor Bill Gantz for $1,000 in January 2017. Stefan Hoyer also contributed $1,000 to Mayor Gantz's campaign in January 2017.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion on item number five, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle.
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
No.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
The next item is a resolution approving a development agreement with the developer for two things specifically, the EMS station that was spoken about, and the reason why it's an add-on, up until this afternoon, we were working on the final details, there are requirements, the fire department has had significant input into that, as would be expected. Initially, we were working on specific provisions with regard to environmental matters, this is going to be, the site is going to be remediated and handed to the city at a remediation level that would be acceptable for a resident, so it would be acceptable for someone to live there, which is the, one of the highest standards that you can ask for, and that is included as part of the agreement, and that is what you are approving tonight. This obligates them to provide to the completion of the project, to have the fire station completed, hand over clear title to the land and the fire station to the city, plus the turn lane.
Anyone from the public care to comment on item number A1? Not seeing anyone, I'm gonna close the public portion to be heard on A1, and keeping in mind the comments that were just made by the gentleman who came up from the audience on the previous item, I think that would apply on this one here. Anything from Mr. Mealy on this regarding it?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commission comments?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, item number A1. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle.
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, Mayor, is in accordance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, amending the capital improvement element of the city's adopted comprehensive plan by revising and updating the five-year schedule of capital improvement. This is the first reading, but it is public care.
Commission comments, or the city manager care to comment on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, commissioners, general public, and audience at home. Yes, if the city commission would like, I would prefer to have Mr. Eric Power speak quickly, just to give the public a brief overview of the CIE. I know that we've already discussed it with each of you individually, thank you.
That would be great.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening, sorry, evening. So, just wanted to briefly discuss just the comprehensive plan element for everyone's knowledge, the, the state of Florida is a growth state, we're one of 28 states in the country that are considered growth states, and by fact, we have to provide comprehensive elements to the state on an annual basis, and the capital improvement element is one of those items. On an annual basis, we are required to provide an updated five-year capital improvement element plan that includes such items such as sanitary sewer, potable water, transportation and traffic improvements, parks and recreation improvements, and things of that nature. The city is able to provide additional information if we deem fit, for example, the city of Deerfield Beach has its own trash service, not every city has that, so, you know, we have an element in our comprehensive plan that also has that as well. The capital improvement element is really meant for items that are of a large purchase, that are one-year item purchased, they're not really meant for maintenance of existing purchases, like, for example, if we installed new sidewalk, the maintenance of that sidewalk would be a capital element. However, maintenance can cost a lot of money, so there are large items that may be deemed maintenance but are actually capital improvements, for example, water pipes, you know, which can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, you turn them out every 20 or 30 years, you know, yeah, you may deem it as maintenance, but in reality, the cost makes it a capital improvement element. So, essentially, what this is, just again, this is the annual requirement from the state, because it's a public property, for us to provide this document, and what you see, it's in the gen item before you, is an update to item 10.3, table 10.3, which is the actual capital improvement element itself, which is, you know, where the meat of the document is, and you'll see that last year's is struck through, and this year has the improvements, including the additional new year.
Thank you. Any commission comments before we open to the public? Commissioner Drosky?
I think that's half the story, I mean, because it's a, my understanding, and from being on planning and zoning, that this document, it's not a mandatory, you know, it's not a staff manual of projects that we must follow, it's basically a wish list for the city of the capital projects that we want to address in the future.
That is true.
Because it's in the plan, doesn't necessarily mean that the commission is going to fund it in a future budget to go forward, so it's, it has to be taken for what it is, it doesn't tie directly into our budget, that's separate, the documents cannot be read together, although it's my understanding that is your endeavor in the future to do that.
Yes, and you're correct, I mean, the item is deemed to be used as a planning tool for cities to be able to think of the future and think of improvements, let's say, for example, five years from now, we think we're gonna have more residents, or five years from now, we're gonna have more traffic, you know, we're gonna, that's the point of the document is to plan, but we are not held to the items. If, for example, we feel that we're gonna have an improvement to, again, a roadway, and a year later, say we got a grant for that roadway, and we remove it, we're not held, you know, to do that, we're simply, we're simply required to go through the planning procedure. What staff would like to do for you in the future is to actually bring this item to you at a different time of the year, so that you can use it as a planning resource for budget. Typically, this item is meant to be brought for you after the budget cycle, because I can't put something in here that says funded if, obviously, you haven't funded it, so we wanna have this item for you in like a draft form of, you know, staff department wish lists for things that we would like to see in the future, as a, as a planning tool for you at budget time, and then once budget's approved, then this item would then be approved to go to the state, because it would be correct with that year's budget.
Mr. Power, can you explain a little bit on what it means to have funded and unfunded on this list?
Actually, that's a, that's a great point. Unfortunately, funding and unfunding this list doesn't mean what we think it means, you know, where you have the money for it, you don't have the money for it. What the funded term means, and this is a state item again, is that it is funded through a correct mechanism, so again, the state requires that we have funding resources. Now, we can have the funding resources that are made available from the state, like a utility bill, or we can create our own, like for Broward County has the Broad and Bridge Fund. So, you know, there are different types of things, or we can have our own, you know, we could have our own type of mechanism for collecting fees. So, what it means that it's funded or unfunded, it means it's funded through something other than the general fund, which the general fund is essentially what you approve every single year, whereas other items, other funds can be earmarked for certain improvements. I couldn't take money from the building department and spend it on police services.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Drosky, I think you're done, any other comments from the commission before we open to the public? Anyone from the public care to comment on this item?
My name's Joe Hines at 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. What we just heard just confused the heck out of me. If I was a little housewife getting water right now out of the spigot, and I looked at this document on page 17, we have $6.38 million worth of funded projects for the year 2018 online, that I wanna make sure that those are being done, so that, I hope that happens. According to page 17, it should happen, it says it's funded, so if it's funded, it should be on board. Doesn't have any priority by it, though, it has a priority and a fund source, and fund source is a utility fund, so obviously, the money's there. When you go on down to the bottom of that page, it gets even more confusing to me. The last two items are under the heading Stormwater. I'll get to the five in a minute. And then you have King Fisher Canal Outfall, and that's $250,000 for 2018, and that's also funded, and that's also a priority four, number four, and it's a fund source number five. Should I be troubled over a number four priority? Does that mean that's going to be behind a one and a two and a three? I mean, what does that mean? I don't know. I mean, if it was DEFCON four, I know it was serious, but I don't know what four means. The, another thing-
Excuse me, your question is, what does four mean?
Yes, sir.
That would be the simplest way to go about it.
Okay.
What does four mean?
Yeah, yeah. What does four mean? Okay. Now, when we get to the fund source five, I'd like you to maybe, I got a question as to what that means too, because when you get over to page 22 on the document, it has your funding source codes, and item number five, guess what that bad boy is? It's a stormwater fee, and we don't even have a stormwater fee. But yet, that is funded according to this document, but we're funding it from the stormwater fee. Now, has the cat got out of the bag or something? I would like the answer for that one too, if I could get one, because that really confuses me, because I thought we were going to have a workshop on stormwater, and it was set for January, and I haven't seen any mention of that either. Thank you very much.
Any else from the public?
Good evening. Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. On the list of projects that are in there, starting in 18 and going out on some, in some areas up to 2020, is about $30 million that is projected to be funded with more bonds. So, and actually, some of these projects show starting in 18. So I guess is the city telling us now by this document that we are now going to be seeing $30 million more in bonds? Is that realistic, or is that fantasy? And if it's fantasy, we really shouldn't put it in a document.
Anyone else from the public? I'm going to close the public portion to be heard. Comments from staff in regards to these points that were made? Mr. Powers, can you address that?
Just quickly while he's walking up, Mr. Mayor, so, excuse me, on page 21, you have the level of priority codes. Number one, of course, is safety. Project is needed to reduce or eliminate an unsafe condition or provide additional safety. Two, leverage funds. Project is partially funded by others, grant match, partnering entity, et cetera. Three, level of service. Project is needed to maintain an adopted LOS or to address a deficiency. And number four is enhancement project. None of the above applies. So with that, I was trying to save you some time.
No, thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, I was going to mention that, but just to state a couple of quick things. So this is, as Commissioner Drosky stated, a wish list. This is staff's wish list to the city as things that we need to be funded. It is required by the state for us to do it. So essentially, what was just stated, and we are required to go through this process. Every municipality in the state, every county in the state is required to go through this process. So I just wanted to make that clear. This document does not provide additional funding or grant funding. The only thing that grants funding is this commission through the budget process. This document is a mechanism, a planning tool to be used to the commission for funding. So the example for the stormwater fee, this, again, number five, stormwater fee, has been listed in this document for multiple years. It is a requirement from the CIE to provide capital improvement projects for stormwater, portable water, wastewater, roads and highways, and so forth. So we are required to list that as an element, and that's the reason why it's there. The stormwater fees come through different funding sources, such as a utility fund, not necessarily a separate, I apologize, but the item that-
In particular, it's not referencing the stormwater fee.
Thank you.
This is the same item that's been in every single capital improvement plan we've had through the last several years, correct?
Yeah, and it's in every municipalities.
It's listed as stormwater.
Right. And we are required to, just like any of this power is required to list it that way.
Okay. So it's listed that way. So if you're going to speculate on this one has any tie to the conversation that we're going to have in the near future regarding stormwater, look at the last two years of the capital improvement plans. It lists the same exact thing.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Yes, it's correct.
Okay. And just again, for clarification, what does four mean? Four just means none of the above, what is at the very bottom of the page. If you're going to read it, I would suggest reading all the way to the bottom. It says it very clearly what that means as far as prioritization.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any commission comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second? We have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
The next ordinance, the ordinance of the City of Deerfield Beach amending section 98.54 and 98.55 of the city's land development code, removing self-storage facility as permitted or conditional use. Which changes the list of permitted uses. This is a public hearing, and this is a, sorry. This will do, it's pretty covered by the authority that self-storage facilities will no longer be permitted uses in B2 and B3.
B2?
B3.
Any comments from the commission before we open to the public? Commissioner Battle?
Andy, I'm not so sure that the public as well as myself know what B1, well, the B2s and the B3s are, because I want to make sure that they don't end up on Dixie Highway.
See, B2 is a highway business zoning district, and Eric probably told the publication business.
Yes, I was gonna-
Would you like to suggest that now?
Yes, yeah, if I could have Mr. Power address that question.
Please don't make me walk back. Good evening again. Yeah, so we have several zoning districts in the city. Obviously, B1, B2, B3 are the most common commercial districts, and the Dixie corridor is zoned either DBR or B3C. Those are the two zoning districts on Dixie. So currently, we wouldn't permit a public storage in a DBR, and this would be prohibiting it in the B3. Essentially, just leaving it into the industrial zoning districts.
So, just to follow up, Mr. Mayor, so am I to, am I to assume then that we're never going to have the fiasco that we have over on a federal highway or right here on Dixie in prime business area? We have storage facilities.
Essentially, what staff is suggesting tonight to commission is that this type of use is a use that belongs to an industrial district and not a commercial district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Anyone from the public care to comment? Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close the public portion to be heard. Just want to make sure, close public portion to be heard, okay? Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve this item.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item eight, mayor is in ordinance, amending chapter two administrative, administration, article seven, use of rights of way. This is the tele, part of the telecommunications right-of-way ordinance. We're requesting that this matter be deferred to February 6, 2018, commission meeting. Item eight, I need a motion for deferral to a date specific, February 6, 2018.
Do we need to public it now?
I'd like to make a motion to defer to February 6.
We have a motion in a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to defer? Can we get an explanation before we?
Yeah, there are ongoing discussions with representatives of the community of attorneys and representatives from the various telecommunications companies, and we are working, our first goal, obviously, is to work with them to come up with something that will work. Obviously, we're trying to be as tough as we can in the regulations, but we have a good working relationship with them, and we'd like to give it a little bit more time to resolve a few small points, and we'll have that for you. And I feel, I'm hesitant to add that we have been ahead of the curve on this right from the beginning with the moratoriums and things of that sort, so we feel confident that this can be done on February 6 with absolutely no harm or no disadvantage to the city.
Okay, perfect. We have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Next is item number nine, ordinance, City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach vacating and abandoning a portion of the right-of-way containing approximately 3,238 square feet along the east side of northeast Eighth Avenue.
Anyone on the commission want to comment before we open to the public? Anyone from the public care to comment on item number nine?
Katie Fire Talk 418, Southeast Second Street. I was a little confused in the description of this. We are gifting land from the city to a church? Is that exactly the?
No, no. Yeah.
Is that what your question is?
Yes, that's my question. I was confused as to exactly where in the city and where along Eighth Avenue that this is taking place, and the backup document looked to me like it was being gifted to the church, so I wasn't sure exactly.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public care to comment? Not seeing anyone yet. Would you like to come up, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Getting a little older, it takes a little time for my titanium knees to get spitting again. My name is Tom Johnston. I'm an attorney from Pompano Beach, Florida, 2335 East Atlantic Boulevard, and it's my pleasure and privilege to represent the owners of this property who happen to be a church organization. They bought it in 1991. Before that, it was a plumbing supply place. Many, 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 many decades ago, before it came into the city of Deerfield, there was a plating exercise in Broward County. And the property had a alleyway imposed halfway between the street, which is Eighth, and the building. And that remained that way. And over the decades, Dixie Highway is four-lane. There was more plating done behind this property. But this prop, this alleyway bifurcates part of the backyard, leaving a unusable piece along the road and a smaller unusable piece at the back of the site. Recently, before I got involved in this several years ago, the owners decided that they wanted to make several hundred thousand dollars' worth of improvements to the site. And working with city staff, they had to come up with a site plan. And during the site plan process, I am told that the issue of the abandonment of this right-of-way came up because it doesn't, it doesn't benefit anybody. You can't get to it on the north side. You could get to it on the south side, but you wouldn't go anyplace except just in the backyard of this property. So staff thought it was perfectly useless. The ability to abandon requires that the sitting body find that there's no public purpose. There's certainly no public purpose if you take a look at the documents that we supplied. We got a very fresh survey. We have a site plan, and in cooperation with the recommendations of city staff, because the site plan will be coming back before you shortly here, the improvements can't start till we get our building permit, but our clients have hired the finest architects and the finest planners, and so we're moving ahead with this now, finally. And we would like to be able to have this property freed up so it's abandoned, so it can be used as much-needed parking in the back. Thank you so much.
Anyone else from the public care to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close the public portion. Commissioner Drosky, then Commissioner Battle?
I remember this case from planning and zoning, and the counselor is right, they have been battling for years because they need this abandonment to get their financing. They can't get their financing without it, and they have been down this battle, and they've put up the good fight. And I remember this from planning and zoning, so they've been literally before us for years fighting this, and I'm glad that it's finally before us for resolution. I'll be voting in favor of it.
Mr. Battle?
Although this is not my district, Joe, I'm going to speak on this because I've worked with the, some of the owners before. And I have to say to the commission that, in all honesty, they have done everything that they were asked to do and have been a joy to work with, and based on that, I'm going to be voting in the affirmative for this also.
Thank you.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Next is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach adopting a supplemental appropriation to the budget for the city of Deerfield Beach for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2018.
City manager would like to comment on this?
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Dunkley and Mr. Gressik to come up to just speak about this briefly.
Good evening, Mayor Gantz, Vice Mayor Miller. I just wanted to indicate, as reflected in the supplemental budget ordinance, what we're requesting here is an increase of approximately $3 million, which will, at this juncture, cover all of the estimated costs that were projected through this date. We're currently going through preliminary procedures with FEMA, and those procedures including answering a host of questions, providing permits that were relevant to the work that was done, and also providing pertinent documentation to substantiate our costs. If you have any particular questions, we'll be more than glad to answer.
Thank you. One point, you said cover estimated costs. This is an approximation. This is not a totaling of what all invoices we have at this point. Is that correct?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. And just for the record, we actually got two new additional invoices this evening, and we haven't received any invoices from the monitoring firm at all. So there's still a lot of unaccounted-for work at this point in time, so as the finance director indicated, this is to approve what we have received to date. We understand that there is more work out there. We hope it's not a significant amount of work, but again, we haven't been given a lot of clarity, unfortunately, from our contractors as to what those additional invoices may look like. So again, we just want to emphasize that at this point in time, this is for us to be able to pay the invoices that are outstanding.
Does the $3 million cover everything that you have outstanding that you know of, or is this expected to increase in the future?
It does. That we are aware of at this present time.
So all invoices totaled, all invoices that have been submitted at this point equal $3 million?
Yes, that we have received thus far.
Okay. And this is to transfer this funding out of the?
Out of the emergency fund, which is a subset of the general fund. Whenever we present the CAFER to you, we report it collectively as a general fund, but it is, in fact, segregated on the books as a separate fund, which I think, if my mind serves me correctly, it's approximately $4 million or so, and give or take, that exists within this fund. But that is what we typically have called a dime for disasters fund, and so there is a delineation of accounting for those funds.
Okay. City manager, you want to add something? No. So knowing that this total is going to go up in the future, you'll be coming before to take more money from that fund or, and ship that money? Is that what I'm understanding?
There's a good possibility that may occur. We're hoping it doesn't, but again, without receiving those remaining invoices, which we know are out there, again, we haven't received one invoice from the monitoring firm. You know, that was a significant amount of effort that, you know, they put in, basically for clarification. You know, we hired two- You know, we hired two firms. We hired a monitoring firm and a removal firm. The removal firm, obviously, is the firm that goes out and does all the work. The monitoring firm essentially babysits that firm to make sure that everything that they do is in compliance with FEMA to make sure that we get maximum reimbursement from FEMA. So their work is still ongoing. And, you know, the issue that we dealt with in the beginning of the storm with resources, we are now seeing that on the back end of the storm because all of those same resources are still spread thin, you know, doing the same type of paperwork, doing the same type of work with FEMA throughout the majority of the state. So this is why the invoices have been delayed to us, at least this is what we're being told. We have asked for these invoices multiple times, and, you know, we just aren't getting them. So, you know, there is a process where everything that's done is reconciled by our monitoring firm, so, you know, they are going to approve everything before we, obviously, submit for payment.
So, to me, I find it amazing that all the bills that we've encountered so far at this point have totaled up to the exact amount of $3 million. And I guess that was my question to you. You're telling me that is the case. I find that highly unusual.
Oh, it's to correct that it's 3.9 million. When you said 3 million, let me clarify what the item before you purports. It represents 3 million in addition to $1 million from fiscal 2017. So therefore, the 3 million from this current evening, coupled with the $1 million, which have already been executed in purchase orders, will give us 4 million, which will cover the 3.9 million, which is on what they call the damage inventory, which we have already transmitted to FEMA. So the damage inventory altogether has a total of $3.9 million reflected on it, of which we've already processed $1 million in purchase orders, leaving 2.9 million, which we estimate this 3 million will cover. And that's where the 3 million. I misunderstood your question. So our total estimate for today is 3.98 million, of which $3 million is being requested this evening to cover the remaining expenses.
Okay.
Yeah, we truly apologize for the misunderstanding there.
Not all this just for us. It's for the public to understand.
By far.
So it doesn't add up. City manager, do you have a comment?
Yeah, if I can, I'll try to. I think what he's asking, Mr. Dunkley, is these are not actual invoices that equal the 3 million yet. This is all...
No, it's an estimate. Yeah, it's an estimate.
I believe that's what you were looking for.
Yeah, and I thought I was clear on that.
Okay, I'm sorry. As a matter of fact, let me even add a little bit more to the situation.
Let me explain to you how I interpret this to be, and then you tell me if I'm incorrect. These are based on what current invoices we have and what the estimates are projected to be in the future.
Correct.
This should be enough to cover what you have projected.
Precisely.
That's why I'm looking at $3 million. I'm just looking at the clean 3 million, and what the public sees when you look at this, and you're going to tell me what I just asked you, totaling up all the invoices you have so far are $3 million. I think that's incredibly coincidental, and you should really buy a powerball ticket tonight. But knowing that that's not the case, this is essentially pulling money from that fund, which you're required to do, to put that aside for this. That money can only be spent on this hurricane and this emergency money that comes forward. This should cover all of the invoices, is what you're saying.
It should.
Okay? If it covers everything or if it comes in less, let's say it's only cost us $2.5 million, what happens to the rest of that money?
It's returned back to the city's fund balance.
It's returned back to the city's fund balance. And we'll know that at the end of the year when we do our budget.
Exactly. When we do our budget reconciliation, we'll present that to you.
And should our costs for this hurricane exceed the amount that you're asking us to take out, and right now it's speculative $3.9 million is what you're saying it's going to cost us? Should that go above that, you're going to come back to us again for this similar type of request?
Yes, it will. We will have to go through a process whereby we'll contact FEMA, and what they'll do is they'll contact the, what they call program delivery manager, will unlock our damage inventory to allow us to increase our estimate.
Okay.
It's a formal procedure. Just to quickly add to our discussion, what FEMA does is they give us, just for what we term emergency measures, debris removal and so forth, for temporary threats to human life and property, they give us six months, 180 days, from the incident date, which was September 4th, 2017. And they expect that there will be some information gathering between, during these six months for us to secure invoices, Mr. Gresik has indicated. So it's not out of bounds for state and local governments to be able to, that they're currently in the fact-finding process of gathering their invoices.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Your...
Any comments from the commission before we open to the public? Commissioner Drosky?
Just one, you did a great job on your own there, so. We were talking about the monitoring firm, and the monitoring firm is Tetra Tech, and the debris collection firm was Ashbrit.
Correct.
And Ashbrit submitted invoices in our backup for $972,713.97. Tetra Tech, when they reviewed those invoices, approved $972,713.97. Is that typical?
So I had the same question. Why are we paying these guys if they're just going to approve everything that goes through? So the response that I was given from Tetra Tech, and it made sense, is that these two firms, in particular, have worked together on multiple storms. So they have a working relationship, so to speak, on how the information is reviewed. So what I was told is before the information even gets to the city, it has already been evaluated and reviewed by Tetra Tech for approval. So that's how they explained it to me. That's why they said that there was a minimal discrepancy, because a lot of that work is done before anything gets over to the city.
And what's the estimated projection for Tetra Tech's bill to us?
I wish I had that number.
What's their projection for approving 100 cents on the dollar?
Yep. We, well, again, their job is not only that, it's also to, again, maximize the various paperwork, the FEMA reimbursement, which is a lot of work, and obviously, it's a lot of money. If we're talking about 75% of, you know, multiple millions of dollars, you know, the concept, and this is all, and all their funds are reimbursable by FEMA as well. So, you know, the federal government understood how complex this process is. They understood that city governments don't do this every day. So there's a value add to have a firm that does this, you know, as their job, to help assist cities, to help make sure the paperwork is accurate, to make sure that ultimately taxpayers' dollars are spent efficiently and effectively. So their job is more than just reviewing invoices. It's out there overseeing the work. They have people on the ground at the disposal sites. You know, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work.
I'm just saying, I, for one, would like to see their invoice when it comes in, please.
I would too. And again, we've been given estimates, and, you know, my concern with giving estimates is always, you really can't win when you give an estimate, right? If you're low, you were low. If you're high, you were high. So again, I want to emphasize that what we are giving and what we provided is based on the best information that we were given by the contractor, as well as what we have.
Thank you. City manager?
Chad, just for the benefit of the city commission and the public, can you explain what Tetra Tech actually does? Because there's more than you're saying.
Sure.
There's a little bit more to it. And explain about how they have to take GPS coordinates, photograph the piles, all of that.
Absolutely.
Just to shake up time.
Sure. No, I think it's important information.
And it's required by FEMA.
And it's required by FEMA. So basically, you know, every truck that's out there for Ashbrit, there's a monitor that has to be associated with that truck. They follow that truck everywhere. They document where that truck was. They take pictures of what that truck picked up. They take GPS coordinates. You know, it's a really, really involved process. And again, the reason for that is to help facilitate and make sure that the work's done efficiently, to, again, preserve taxpayer dollars. In addition to that, obviously, they work with us in regards to the planning. They work with us in regards to the closeout with FEMA. So it is a significant amount of work, and honestly, we're happy to have the help because, again, our staff, our day job is solid waste recycling. This is a multimillion-dollar extra add that our staff is, you know, working through. So any assistance we got from, you know, Tetra Tech or Ashbrit, you know, is certainly, you know, appreciated, for sure.
Does Tetra Tech realize that they're supposed to be the one, the checks and balance that keeps Ashbrit honest? Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So when they come in and say, "We've worked with them many times," and everything matches up 100 percent.
Sure.
They realize that they're basically putting themselves in a situation where we're going to question whether or not what they're doing, if we're getting the fair shake on this.
Absolutely.
Does Tetra Tech also realize, considering after what just happened to this hurricane, they might want to get used to working with a different company than Ashbrit? Because I have a feeling that Ashbrit might not be named in a lot of cities when it comes to winning a contract.
Sure. No, and, you know, what's happening with the monitoring firms as well is they're getting a bad name as well because of these delays.
Okay.
You know, they cannot...
The delays don't concern me as much as having that be spot-on with the dollar amounts as pointed out. So if there are checks and balances and everything happened to work out exactly to the penny, it's surprising, and it should be concerning. And I would recommend that we talk to FEMA about having that looked out to make, because I don't know where, as a city, we go to to make sure that our butt's covered on that type of thing. Excuse me, excuse my language. But...
That's a great point.
I would like to know where we go on that to make sure. And I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong, but they're putting themselves in a situation where their justification for the numbers lining directly up is because we've worked with them on several different projects.
Sure.
That's a little concerning.
I could agree.
Thank you. City manager?
Yes, if I could just clarify on Chad's behalf. So the solid waste division and sanitation division, you know, they're a little bit more knowledgeable than what Chad's, he's being somewhat modest, because we actually, Tetra Tech did not monitor the city work. We were able to self-monitor ourselves. So you want to talk a little bit about that, Chad?
Sure. You know, because, and just, you know, one of the things that, you know, a lot of lessons learned from this storm, obviously, you know, this was my first experience working for the city with a hurricane, and hopefully the last. You know, definitely lessons learned, and one of the key lessons is, if you own the asset, you are in a much better position than anybody else. And we saw that with our own equipment. You know, we were able to get this material up a lot faster than a lot of other cities that have to rely on 100 percent private contractors. So again, you know, having our own staff, and we have fantastic staff, I mean, you guys see them out there every week picking up the bulk, you know, was a huge plus for us. And FEMA allows cities that have their own equipment to self-monitor. So we don't need to do the pictures, we don't need to do the GPS, but we still need to monitor and track the information in a different way. A couple of years ago, we implemented a new management system for our solid waste division, which thankfully encapsulates all that information. So we're already collecting that data, so it was very easy for us to communicate that to FEMA and show them what we're doing, what we have, and so on and so forth. So, you know, again, a lot of lessons learned, but take home is, it's great to have our own staff and our own equipment, for sure.
And they did a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the commission before we open to the public? Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Katie Fartag, 14 Southeast Second Street. Just being a resident, I find it hard to believe that, I understand not wanting to throw out an estimate of what this Tetra Tech is going to charge us for their monitoring system or their monitoring services. I find it hard to believe that we are in business with somebody, we have absolutely zero idea how much they're going to charge us for their services. I would have thought that we would have at least some type of a budgetary information or some type of budgetary constraints allowed or given or what have you regarding any kind of a company that we're doing business with as a city. I would have thought that that would be part of their RFQ, RFP, however the course, that they got chosen for this particular job. That's my question.
Thank you.
Jeff Chester, 4065 Lynn Hurst Den, Deerfield Beach, Florida, 33442. My question goes to, when I heard the amount that's being spent, I was wondering if the city attorney can give an opinion as to whether or not FEMA has actually stated categorically that they intend to reimburse the city for cleanups done in gated communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dan Hurst, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I want to read from the audited financial statements of the city dated September 30th, 2016, under financial reserve policies. It says, "A disaster emergency reserve fund balance of 5% of general fund annual budget expenditures and transfers is committed by the city commission so as to ensure the maintenance of services to the public during hurricanes and other natural disasters, as well as economic changes that might severely impact the city's ability to provide necessary public services." My math is pretty good. There's $100 million in the general fund. 5% of that would mean that there should be $5 million in the disaster emergency reserve fund. My hearing may not be good, but I thought I just heard Hugh Dunkley say, give or take, that there is $4 million or so in that account, but definitely a figure less than $5 million. So the citizens of Deerfield Beach would like to know, why is there not $5 million in that fund, and why is the city not following their own financial reserve policies? Thank you.
My name is Joe Hines. I'm at 559 North West, 47th Terrace. You know, I've watched trucks over the years and heard stories about trucks and how they move around, and how it might be a shell game. I just wondered if the city had stationed at any of these dump sites, somebody that monitored how many trucks came in, logged that information, and had just kept track of it for the city, exclusive of this so-called monitoring company. I wish that would have been done, and that might help the city feel more comfortable about what these bills are mounting to. The second thing is, I hear all the bills haven't come in, and that troubles me. I don't know, I mean, I've worked for people that would send me a letter or a telegram or some kind of instrument that said, if they owed me any money, I had to have an invoice to them within the next 24 hours or you could forget about it. And I think the city ought to do something in that order to speed that up. So you're spending, you're putting out your money, and you're going to have to wait to get it back. Which leads to another question. Has the city actually paid Ashcraft monies for work in place?
Ashbrit, I'm assuming you mean.
Now, this monitoring company, think of them as a bean counter, okay? They're not driving a truck, they're counting the beans. And now they can't even tell you how many beans they, they're owed. That's a problem right there. You know, they're not even monitoring our own business. I mean, obviously, they've expended a bunch of money. How are they getting paid? I mean, they have employees, they have time involved, they have, you know, and besides out there in a data world, I'm sure they all have, other people out there have computers and all this kind of stuff, and they can just push a few buttons here and there, and they can come up with these numbers. So I don't know why they can't get a, you know, get an amount to you guys and get it in a timely fashion. I mean, is something wrong with this picture? I mean, it just confuses... I mean, it just, it just confuses the heck out of me, and, and I would, I would send them a letter telling them if they don't get their bills into me, they could just go shimmy up a tree.
Thank you very much.
Glenn Sullivan, 233, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I'd like to, again, I know a lot of people have, but commend the city for the excellent job they didn't pick it up. I didn't see many Ashbrit trucks, but I did see a lot of city trucks, and they did a fantastic job. On this $3 million, I know Commissioner Drosky mentioned 973, that's what I added up in the back of all of the invoices. And those invoices were through the 28th of October. I don't know how much more work was left after that, but I imagine the predominant amount of work would have been done by the 28th of October. So saying that it's going to cost double what the million dollars already in the books is, is, seems kind of high, but be that as it may, I, it would have been good to see in that, in that section of the, the agenda or the backup that there was a billing problem. I didn't see that, and if I missed it, I apologize, but that would have explained a lot to the citizens on why it's $3 million and, and the, the billing has been delayed. And then just one other question. Is any of that $3 million or $3.98 million include reimbursement for the city work, overtime, or so on and so forth?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not seen anyone, I'm going to close the public portion. So just to kind of go down to get some of these questions answered. As far as, from my understanding with Tetra Tech, as far as why we don't have an estimate what's thrown out there, obviously, they wouldn't, we don't, we know what they're going to charge us for actually doing the work, but depending on how much work there is, we, we know what the rate is, we just don't know how many, I guess you could say, hours were put in on it. Is that accurate?
That's, that's correct. That's the way these, these procurements are procured, because you don't know the level of work that's needed, so they're, they're units.
Right. The question to the city attorney regarding FEMA and reimbursement for gated community cleanups?
It is, the best way to put it is, reimbursement for collection within gated communities is permissible, provided certain conditions are met. We went through about four different iterations of what those conditions were with FEMA, but we believe and feel very confident that we complied with them, and I believe that that will be the result.
I know we're certainly in better shape than most cities were when it came to that type of thing. Can, city manager, do we have an answer to the question about the amount that is allotted for our emergency fund?
Without having the city's books and minutes, records or what have you with me, I, it indicated earlier it's 4.5 million. To specifically respond to the gentleman's query as to why we don't have $5 million, it's a function of the total tax revenues that's generated each year, which in turn is a function of your tax rate. If the city commission so chooses to earmark funds to go into that fund, it is at their pleasure that we transfer those amounts. Over the years, we have not, staff has not seen the need to transfer additional funds. Even though our policy states $5 million, we felt that it would be the greatest relief to the taxpayer, considering that we have built up our fund balance that we could take from other areas, i.e., unassigned fund balance, to cover the shortfall. So in a nutshell, to be able to transfer monies to this designated or dime for disasters fund will have a definite impact on the taxpayer's tax bill, which over the years we have been trying to minimize such an impact. If that answers the question.
The other question we have is, and I'm still trying to Google it, what a shimmy up a tree is, I'm not quite sure what that is. But, and I, I think one of the points you, you made is the frustration is these bills haven't come in. And, and my understanding is part of the reason that that is happening with a lot of these companies is because this event didn't just occur in the city of Deerfield Beach. This was a statewide issue. Many of these companies have been, are still, if anybody's been to the Keys in Monroe County, it's unbelievable what's still going on down there. And so while that's not a great excuse for them, I can certainly understand this long length of time, though it's getting to a point where enough's enough and the bills need to come in. So this is, I'm assuming that that's what the issue is, and from what I've been told that is part of the issue.
Yes, that's exactly what we've been told.
Okay. As far as the question regarding city staff and the costs that it put for us to put it out there, is that included in what our overall estimated costs are?
It is.
It is?
Yep.
Okay. So in other words, if you are using departmental funding that's been budgeted for them, their overtime and stuff like that, you're reimbursing that department for the monies that we've spent.
Correct.
Correct?
It's listed in the exhibit.
Thank you.
And if I could just, you know, again, I want to emphasize, you know, Tetra Tech is a national firm. This is not a small, little mom and pop. This is a very, very powerful, successful, you know, maybe that's not the right term, powerful, but, you know, they're a very good firm.
It's a large firm.
A large firm. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and again, to emphasize, you know, the checks and balances that, that were made, GPS, photo records, you know, they, they had monitors with every truck. We met with these individuals every day, okay? And, and in addition to that, myself and my staff drove through the city to make sure the work was being done. So I certainly don't want it to be construed that, you know, nobody was watching the hen watch the hen house, so to speak, or the fox watch the hen house. So we certainly, there was oversight, and, and we certainly, you know, did what we could to make sure, and continue to do and make sure, that what is being submitted was actually done.
And I think the FEMA scrutiny alone would also...
Absolutely. And that's why FEMA requires it.
Okay. Commissioner Parnas?
When I was in business, and I bought many items, I was a bid broker, and I represented many companies like Kaiser Aluminum, the City of New York, the federal government, et cetera. I was kind of happy when Kaiser didn't send me $100,000 invoice. My money sat in the bank earning interest. When the bill came, I paid it. When it didn't come, my money earned money. It's not a bad thing if companies don't bill you immediately when your money's earning money in a bank. I don't see what the problem is. We pay the bills when they come in. They don't come in, I don't tell a guy, "Well, if you don't pay me this week, shimmy up a tree," because I did a lot of business with that company. So it's not a bad thing. Not that it's the greatest thing in the world, but you don't lose money when your money's sitting in the bank, and in this case, it's your money that's sitting in a bank earning interest. And there's nothing wrong with that.
Is that a motion?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle, Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Item number 11, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, amending Chapter 74 Waterways, Article 2, boats, and the city code of ordinances to establish a vessel exclusion zone in the Atlantic Ocean within approximately 400 feet of the mean high water line along the beaches within the city.
Anyone on the commission comment?
I'm going to be voting yes, and I hope there's not a lot of comments.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience here to comment on this item?
I had my light on, too.
Ums?
It's too long. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, I did not.
Not seen anyone from the public, I'm going to close the public portion, be heard. Commissioner Parnas?
Yes. How are we going to determine the 400 feet? Are we going to put buoys up, ropes up?
There are going to be buoys out.
Buoys, okay, fine, thank you. Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second? Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle.
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Item number 12, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, amending Chapter 98 Land Development Regulations of the city of Deerfield Beach Land Development Code by amending Section 98, there's three definitions, to provide definitions relating to pharmacies and medical marijuana users, and to revise the definition of store retail and by amending Section 98, 53, B1 Business Community District, Section 93, 54, B2 Highway Business District, and Section 98, 55, B3 Business, General Business District, to modify the list of permitted uses to address pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries, and provide related regulations for such uses.
Commissioner Parnas?
As those who have been attending this item on agendas know that I am in favor of medical marijuana. However, I do not see any problem with restricting the location of where they can be put in town. Do I want them in town? Yes. I have many senior citizens who live in Century Village and other places, who are now on medical marijuana, and they have to get to Delray, or Lake Worth, rather, to pick it up, to get it. And some of them don't have cars anymore, they don't drive. This makes it rather difficult for them to get medicine they could be getting here in Deerfield Beach. We did vote to approve it, and again, I don't find it unreasonable to restrict what type of zoning we place the men, as long as they're here in Deerfield.
Commissioner Drosky and then Vice Mayor Miller?
I, I think we should be addressing 12 and 13 together, at least my comments will, because there's no way 12 and 13 both can pass.
Well, I don't think we can, because one's a second reading, the other one's a first reading. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, but you could, you could have the discussion, yeah, you can, you would have to address them separately, but the discussion can bleed over if you'd like it.
Bleed away.
Yeah. Thank you.
I, I first want to thank the city attorney, Mr. Marotis, and Mr. Soroka on this. They, they worked very honest, very diligent, very hard on this. They're, they're answering to two different factions on this issue. They've done so very professionally, in my opinion, so I just want to thank them for the time and effort that they put in, no matter which way that this comes out. Although this is a fait accompli. Anyone that's attended a meeting before knows how this is going to turn out. There's no, there's no suspense here tonight what's going to happen. Number 12 is going to pass, and number 13 is going to fail. I fully know that, making my remarks here tonight. But in opposition to number 12, in support of number 13, I don't think by doing so is trampling the rights of the voters in the constitutional amendment that was passed. The voters voted for medical marijuana to be approved. This isn't a debate about whether medical marijuana is the right thing or the wrong thing. That debate is over and done with, the dead horse is out of the barn. What the voters didn't discuss or prove or have the right to say is how that medical marijuana is going to be regulated. They voted to allow it, but they didn't determine how it's going to be allowed. And the state legislature is the one that has domain over this particular issue, and they have given the municipalities and the counties two very bad options. And only two options. You have the option to ban it outright, or you have the option to allow it or treat it as any other pharmacy, such as a CVS or a Walgreens. So that's the debate that we're limited to, thanks to our friends in Tallahassee. Most of the municipalities have chosen option A, to ban it. Lake Worth has allowed it, and there are two locations in Miami that are open that allow it as well. The Lake Worth location, contrary to my colleague's assertion, and with all, with apologies to the Pelican and to the Observer, the Sun Sentinel article stated that the, the Lake Worth location, that his company delivers to Broward County residents, and Broward County residents have visited his Lake Worth store. It's also not about preventing access to our residents to getting the medical marijuana. If you go on to the state of Florida's website, floridahealth.gov, and there's an Office of Medical Marijuana Use, if you go to their website, there's eight centers listed with phone numbers and email. So you can have it delivered to your front door. You don't have to leave your house, or your apartment, your condominium, whatever it may be. It can be delivered to your front door, no matter where you live in the state of Florida. So this isn't a debate about preventing access, because whether you ban it or you don't ban it, you're going to be able to have access to it anyway. My concern, in my opposition, centers around the unintended consequences that are come out of this. Fortunately or unfortunately, whichever way you look at it, the unintended consequences are actually kind of foreseeable with this particular issue. The first one is our business community. We promised to be with our businesses, to protect our businesses, to encourage our businesses, to grow our businesses here in the city of Deerfield Beach. In fact, back in November, we had a state of the city address where we all got together, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and we told the businesses exactly that. But that's not the message, and that's not what our businesses are hearing. Our businesses are hearing that, you know, our leaders are with them, but only when it's politically convenient for us to do so. You know, some of the businesses are here tonight, most of them are not. The reason is because they know how, what this vote is going to come out. Nobody wants to come out and speak against the majority commission. That's just the reality. The businesses are also concerned about the next step in this, in this debate, which is going to be the recreational use of marijuana. Anyone who doesn't think that's the next approved item that's going to happen is kidding themselves and naive. That's absolutely going to be the next step. The businesses are concerned what's going to happen to them that are already located in Deerfield Beach, because if we allow this, Deerfield Beach is going to be ground zero. And these businesses will have lines next to them, they will have people parking. These are their concerns that they're concerned with. And the, the proposed ordinance that we have before us, while, and I'm number 12, that is, while it's a good start, it has some gaping holes in it that you can drive a Mack truck through, because it doesn't contemplate these unintended consequences that are going to happen. It doesn't account for any standing lines outside of these locations. It doesn't account for sufficient lobby size to hold enough people so they can be indoors and not outdoors. And it doesn't account for any store size limits that may come under this particular ordinance. Other municipalities have limited the size of the store. For example, I think it was Western or Wellington, it was a W. Wellington has limited these dispensaries to 10,000 feet. You have to be 10,000 square feet or more. Our ordinance doesn't touch on any of those particular topics. The second unintended consequence of this is going to be property values. If you talk to commercial lenders, which I have, these dispensaries are rightfully or wrongfully, they're the equivalent, treated the equivalent of strip clubs and bars. So these dispensaries will inadvertently devalue the property values that we hear in the city of Deerfield Beach. The city manager has talked about going to the Broward County Property Appraisers' Office and having our businesses looked at to increase their property value so it can get more tax revenue here in the Deerfield Beach. But if the dispensaries are inadvertently bringing down our property values, how are we going to increase tax revenues here in the Deerfield Beach? We're challenging ourselves on that particular issue and putting handcuffs on ourselves. The third unintended consequence is going to be economic development here in the city of Deerfield Beach. Businesses are going to be unwilling to open or relocate, if there's, excuse me, dispensaries in our city. Fortune 500 companies, they have people on staff who look at demographics, who look at the cities, who study these things inside and out where they're going to locate their businesses. I can tell you that Fortune 500 companies are not going to pick Deerfield Beach when Pompano Beach and Boca Raton and everyone around us is a safer bet than Deerfield Beach. I feel, you know, I feel kind of sad for our economic development developer, development coordinator, and any economic development teams that we may have in our future. It's going to make their job very, very difficult here in the city of Deerfield Beach to bring in quality, big business into the city of Deerfield Beach. So I think by voting down number 12 and implementing the ban on 13, we are protecting our businesses that are already established here in the city of Deerfield Beach. We are protecting our residents here in the city of Deerfield Beach, because no matter what they do, they're going to have access to medical marijuana. We're protecting our property values here in the city of Deerfield Beach, and we're protecting our economic development. I don't want this to turn into a social debate. I think it probably will be. Everything that I've said here may get turned on me, I may get skewered on here, but we have to keep in mind who we are. We're the city of Deerfield Beach. The regulation, you know, is to the state of Florida or the United States Congress. Those are the entities that really should be helping us out here, and they have failed us. So shame on them for doing that, but we have to be concerned about our residents and our businesses right here in the Deerfield Beach. So when we get to item number 13, there's a realistic possibility that it may not get a second, you know, it may not get a second for any discussion. I hope that someone has the wisdom to do so. I hope that someone has the wisdom to do so. Vice Mayor, I'm talking to you in specific, just for the ability, just to have the ability to go on record, to, at least for voting purposes, to put us all on record so that we can tell our businesses here in Deerfield Beach exactly where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drosky. I believe it was, I missed the order in which all the lights flew up. You must have hit some key points. We're going to, we're going to go with Commissioner Battle, Commissioner Parnas and the Vice Mayor Miller.
It's about probably the opposite of the way it went up. That's okay.
That's okay. I get to call it.
Yeah, you get to call it. I, you know, I, obviously I voted for this the first time and on item number twelve, I will be voting to support it. I don't think that we should be in the posture of punishing our citizens for the misdeeds of the legislature. The citizens voted on this and we need to give it a chance, one way or the other. And I heard all the arguments about how we're going to hurt our businesses, one way or the other. I don't think so. But I do think if we don't pass this, we will hurt the dispensaries, one way or the other. And how are you going to say, how are you going to tell one business, we're going to support you, one business, a couple, a number of businesses, but you tell the other business or one business that we are not going to support you, one way or the other? I think the best thing for us to do is to do what we're deciding to, what I hope we're going to decide to do tonight, is put them into a district or set up rules and regulations as to where they can establish themselves and become viable business for the community. Again, I don't believe, and I heard all the argument about the Fortune 500 companies and all that stuff, and I have to say to you, to the, to the public, how many Fortune 500 companies are knocking on our doors right now? I don't think that many, but what I do know is that if we don't go out there and market Deerfield Beach to the Fortune 500 companies, none of them are going to come knocking on our doors. About those long lines, one way or the other? Every time I go to my ATM, they're long lines. If you tell me that, and I don't buy the argument that just because we approve medical marijuana, that we're going to have a whole lot of climb and all this kind of stuff going on in the city of Deerfield Beach. I just don't believe that, based on what I know about, and I do know now, some people that are actually getting the medication and some of my own family members. Parkinson is one of those diseases that it can, it helps very well. I would like for my folks to be able to get their medicine right here. I understand that the legislature has proved, approved the fact that they can deliver it to your house, one way or the other. I'd be, you know, I'd be very mad if my medicine wasn't delivered on time or not delivered at all because the dispensary is way up in Lake Worth or wherever those others are. Based on my assessment of the ordinance, number twelve, I'm going to be voting yes on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Parnas, before I have you speak, if sorry, the city manager can clarify something?
Yes. So I have nothing to do with the policy aspect of this, but I do want to clarify the record based on a statement that Commissioner Drosky made. The meeting that the mayor and I will be having with Marty Kier is not about the revenue or increasing revenue into the city from businesses. It's actually about the equitable value assessment of all businesses, including commercial and industrial and residential, because what we are finding is that many properties have not increased in value while a property right down the street, forget the home protection and all of that, has not increased. It doesn't make sense. So our, our meeting with the property appraiser is actually to find out why that's occurring. And yeah, the ultimate goal is while revenue may increase, that is exactly how cities like Boca Raton, Weston and Parkland have a lower mileage rate because you have a higher property value base to start with. So that's really what this is about. It's more about the equity of how our property owners are being assessed. So not to belabor the point, but that's actually why we're meeting with Mr. Kier. Thank you. Got me saying anything, Mr. Mayor?
No, no. Sounds about right. Commissioner Parnas?
First of all, we represent the people. Seventy-four percent of the people in this town voted for medical marijuana. They didn't vote to get it in Lake Worth. They didn't vote to get it in Miami. They voted to get it here. And this business, the businesses are going to run away. Who's going to run away? Some of the strip bars? We allow them. Drugstores that sell opiates that addict and kill people? We allow them, but the word marijuana, oh my God. No. Restrict it, put it in certain areas. And as far as long lines? Go to Walmart on Black Friday and tell me about lines. Go to Target on Black Friday and tell me about lines. And people standing in the street? Oh my God, what a terrible thing. Walmart's sitting there licking its chops. Look at all these people coming to buy my products. We're here to do the will of the majority of people in Deerfield and in Broward County and in the state of Florida, and they overwhelmingly support medical marijuana. And I approve this item that says we want to restrict it to certain business zones. Fine, but to deny the residents what they voted for because of some fear, the boogeyman's going to get us if we allow them in here? Nonsense. Are we going to close CVS because it sells opiates? No. The stores that sell cigarettes that cause cancer? No. Why this then? It's a medicine. You can't get high on it. You can't even smoke it. You can make brownies, put it in soup, have some oil, and you can't get high from it. Look at it honestly and say, this is a medicine that helps people with bone cancer, kids with epilepsy, rheumatoid arthritis that's extremely painful and say, we're denying you because we're afraid. No, I support this. I support twelve and reject thirteen because thirteen is not the will of the people of this town, this county or this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Parnas. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes. When this marijuana issue first came before us and the state said, you can have dispensaries or you can't take it all or no, and we can't regulate it, I was against that because I don't like the state telling me where I can have businesses in my city. But number twelve alleviates my concerns that I originally had. For example, on my street, there are four Airbnbs. And I want to, you can say, well, you live on a desirable street. People want to rent there for a holiday, but I'm, I still live by the beach because I enjoy it. But there is a negative effect where the state mandating that we can't decide that you can turn a residential house into a business. I feared that. I also had visions of the pill mills that we participated in a bust a couple of years ago, right here by the post office, notorious pill mill, out of state cars coming lining up in lines. But I think, Commissioner Drosky, as many good points as you made, you paint about the bleakest picture possible of what a state sanctioned distribution center of medical marijuana is. I frankly think it very well could be just the opposite of the picture you paint. It could be a thriving business that may help restaurants flourish in the area. And so maybe it's somewhere in between the two, your picture or my picture, but I don't think it's as bleak as you think because it's not a pill mill and it is highly regulated and there is a medical prescription to get it. So number, the first reason I put my light on is to say a vote for twelve is to nullify thirteen, and I'm going to be voting positive for twelve, so I think that will nullify thirteen. I like to call, or do we have to have, do we have to go to public? Public, let's go to public. But time is getting late. I think y'all know where it's going to go. You want to skip your comments, I'm going to just vote.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, I'll open this up to the public before we have closing comments. Anything for the public here to comment?
Hi, Sandra Jackson, 386 Southwest 35th Avenue. I hate to say, I agree with Commissioner Dorsky. Dorsky, Dorsky, you know what I'm talking about regardless of what. But anyway, I agree. I think the same thing is going to happen with the sober homes, okay? We guys allowed that to come here in Deerfield and you'll see what happened in Deerfield. I have no problem with the marijuana, but I think it needs to go to a pharmacist like CVS, Walgreen, because people can go there and they will deliver. And you don't have to worry about Ms. Babbitt getting your drugs or whatever, late because you can't get them on time. That's my only thing, because I think it needs to be regulated. And I think if we do the dispenser, it's going to get out of order. And I do think our values will go down and we're going to have a lot of problems because when the kids think about marijuana, then you're having problems where the kids are going to be trying to get into those dispensers because they say marijuana will make you high. It's going to make you hungry. It's going to bring up the retail for the restaurants. It can make some money, you know? But I really do think we need to take a handle on it and maybe go back. There needs to be some regulation. I think it needs to go to a pharmacist, not a dispenser. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Katie Fryt Talk, 418 Happy Second Street. The federal government has known, as long as I know, as far as I know, did not allow Walmart or Walgreen or CVS to carry this. This is, has to be separate. I think the main reason that they can't do it in those locations is because it kind of does require a little extra time. It's not just filling a prescription. They have to have everything checked, double-checked by the two different doctors that have to prescribe it. There's a lot more time. It's like going for a regular doctor's visit. And I know about any of you, but I've never been able to get out, in and out of a doctor in under an hour. So it does take a little more time and yes, there might be a little bit longer of a line, but I don't think it's going to do any bit of, any bit of disservice to the other businesses that are in the, in the area. I don't think it, to me, it's a step above rehabs, a big step above rehabs. It's not, I don't think it'll harm my house, my, the value of my home any more than the rehabs already have. Who knows? Maybe it actually might help. Maybe more people will move here and open businesses here because they know that we are here for our residents. We're here as a city to represent everybody and not just certain individuals. So I'm all for it. I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to comment? Not seeing anyone come forward who can close the public portion to be heard. Commissioner Parnas?
Last shot. Number one, the reason CVS, Walgreens, Publix can't handle marijuana, it has to be cash. They have to have security. The center in, if any of you has visited Lake Worth, people in my constituency have telling me it's like a palace. It's clean, it's rapid, and they enjoy going there. They don't get high. These are people in their nineties who I wouldn't care if they were home and did get high, if it'll ease their pain, but this eases their pain and you can't get high on it. What a terrible thing that is. Right? So like I say, if you want to restrict it in certain areas of Deerfield, fine, I'll go along with that, even though it means restricting more drugstores, which I don't think we need in this town. They have the same rights as Walgreens and CVS. Any location we put them in is the same locations we put a CVS or a Walgreens. So it's not, they can't open on every corner because number twelve here restricts them to certain areas of the city with certain requirements. We can always change an ordinance, but for the seventy-four people, seventy-four percent of the people that say yes, we should give this a try. Lake Worth has not been held up. In our last meeting, I had done some research. Colorado says their crime rate of robberies of stores didn't go up less or more than one-tenth of one percent as any other store that gets robbed, whether it's a bar, 7-Eleven. They haven't been held up any more than any other retail shop. So where's the danger? They have security. It's cash only. That's why they have the security. There's been no break-in so far in either Miami or Lake Worth. Let's give it a shot. We can always change an ordinance later, as thirteen is trying to do right now. We voted for this on this commission. I say we give it a shot. Thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Before we do that, I'm going to comment if that's all right. I'm sorry that frustrates you. Vice Mayor, I'm really sorry that frustrates you, but I think you need to let all of us speak our mind on this issue, okay? I appreciate your wanting to move things along, but let's just take a step back for a minute. Here's the bottom line. I think, Commissioner Drosky, I respect your opinion, but I believe that you're operating under the guise that these operations are going to look like some 1970's Cheech and Chong head shop that you've seen out of High Times Magazine. That's not what they look like. These are very medicinal. They are clean. They are not what you expect. And let's, let's, there's, I'm amazed at the misinformation that even our, my colleagues are up here spouting on some of this. The reason CVS and all these others do not, aren't able to do it because it has to come from the people that have the marijuana grow licenses. My understanding is, and I'm not going to claim to be an expert on this, my understanding is the people that have the grow licenses have to take it basically from farm to the actual store. That's the way the rule works. So CVS and all these others don't have that ability to do that. But these are not going to look like some Bob Marley poster, black light, building setup. It's not going to have that same type of effect. And just because someone has put up a banner somewhere in our city doesn't mean that we have issued any licenses or any, you know, permits to have one open here in our city yet. The legislature did do us a disservice. The legislature does us a disservice on a regular basis and we have to do rules to work around that in order to provide in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Deerfield Beach. The citizens voted in the state of Florida, almost 72%, that this should be allowed. And I heard a very interesting and educated debate by our own planning and zoning board. When put before them, everyone in it was in agreement for the use of medical marijuana by that zoning board, but they had the same concerns that all of us have with the inability to legislate where we want to put, put these types of establishments. For the record, the city of Deerfield Beach didn't allow sober homes. The federal government allows sober homes, all right? So let's not assume that the city of Beach, city of Deerfield Beach decided to do that. What happens with these medical marijuana dispensaries? In my opinion, yes, is it uncharted territory? Yes. Are other cities backing away from it? Yes. I think they're completely misinformed. I think they're uneducated on the subject and just by the misinformation that's being tossed around here tonight, I think several of us in this room are as well. So I think it's something that, it is not the same as the pill mill situation that we had before. And for, if everybody's worried about kids going into these places, let me tell you what, they're going to be better. Any kid who thinks they're going to be getting a high by trying to, first you have to get your license, you have to be allowed, you have to have a, it has to be given with a prescription. This is not the same thing. Any kid that's going to go on the street that wants to get marijuana is probably going to get a much stronger dose and a lot cheaper than what you're going to get from these medical- and a lot cheaper than what you're gonna get from these medical marijuana dispensaries. So, I, I think this is a stigma based on archaic points of view when it comes to marijuana. And, now will that affect us in the business community? There's, people in the business community might have that same archaic view. But I don't believe that we are gonna have the same problem as far as luring Fortune 500 companies to come to the city of Deerfield Beach, simply because we allow medical marijuana dispensaries. The voters have spoken on this, it's a disservice of them to try to pawn it off back on the legislature. Because I really don't think the dangers that are out there and are being speculated on are nearly as severe as what people are professing them to be. So, I am in support of this. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I wanted to speak my piece on this.
No, I appreciate your comments, Mayor, I'm sorry I forgot you hadn't weighed in. I think you knew where it was going, I wanted to move us along.
I don't know where any of this goes, so, we'll see.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Which are you approving?
Uh, the motion 12.
So we have a motion, a second, to approve item number 12. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Dorsky?
No.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
I think at this point, I'm...
Item 13.
Well, I think, the way we had drafted it, uh, it's not a repealer ordinance, so it, it, we could not...
So are we gonna, are we gonna strike item number 13 that we're looking to do, how do we handle that?
I, I would, I'd suggest them that it be tabled, uh...
Definitely.
Or, or you just move the agenda, which means it'd go right past it.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay, let the record show, passed four to one, Commissioner Dorsky dissenting. Uh, public comment?
No comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be given to the opportunity to speak for three minutes, with the possibility of an extension of one minute by the mayor on matters which are not on the agenda.
Anyone from the public here to speak? Not seeing anyone, I'm gonna close the public portion to be heard. Public comment, agreements and expenditure requests? You know what, I'm gonna call the order, if we're, it's a little hard to read what everybody's trying to do. We're getting in these fake outs, people are standing up, and we're asking if someone's coming forward. Someone wants to drag their feet whether they're coming forward, we have others having discussions, so... I understand we have someone who'd like to speak, I'm gonna reopen that with the commission's approval for public comment.
I just wanna come up and say Sandra Jackson, 386 Southwest 35th Avenue. Um, I wanna thank the city and Dorsky for coming to my daddy's service. As you guys know, my daddy worked for the city of Deerfield Beach, he went to the BSO, he was 89 years old. He worked for the school board for about 40 years, and he also was his crossing guard. He passed on Christmas Day. And I just wanna thank you guys for your support. Tomorrow they're doing a national, um, well, the city did a national day for January 6th. We will be doing something each year of January 6th, you can mark your calendar, we're planning to remember my dad, and it will be a celebration in the city of Deerfield Beach, not only for him. Um, and also, um, tomorrow the school board, Broward County, all the schools of Broward County is giving one minute solemn in, um, remembrance of him. Thank you guys again.
Joe Hines, 559 Northwest 47th Theres. I, I thought maybe tonight we'd see something on the stormwater meeting that was supposed to be scheduled for January, I don't see it on here. Um, I don't know if that's something the city has thought through and has changed their mind on, or if that's something that's gonna be postponed for the future, or just whatever, but I'd like to know the status of that workshop meeting that was discussed for scheduling in January. Thank you.
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue, Deerfield Beach. The founding fathers of this great country came up with a system called checks and balances to ensure that the Congress, or the courts, or even the President of the United States could not run roughshod over the will of the people whom they ultimately serve. Wikipedia says the system of checks and balances is used to keep the government from getting too powerful. Now let's see how well this system works right here in our own city government. The city manager Burgess Hansen whispered at the last meeting that he personally is not part of any employee union contract with the city, and he works solely for the Deerfield Beach Commission. So in essence Burgess Hansen has five bosses, the four commissioners...
Mr. Hirsch, Mr. Hirsch, if you could reference just as the city manager.
The city manager has five bosses, the four commissioners and the mayor. The city manager has an employment contract with the city of Deerfield Beach dated September 7th, 2010, of which I happen to have a copy of. It states in section 12 that the five of you shall annually review the performance of the city manager. The city manager is still waiting for his very first performance review. Why is it so important that the city manager has never received a review? Because it is just plain human nature that if no one is giving you a formal performance review, that employee is going to do whatever they feel like doing, because there is no system of checks and balances in place here in Deerfield Beach city government. The citizens of Deerfield Beach have brought up numerous examples of decisions made by the city manager that may not have been in the best interests of the citizens that he is supposed to be working for. I won't waste time going over them now. The mayor has made his position clear on this issue by stating at a previous meeting that no city manager has been reviewed in 20 years. It's funny, I learned in kindergarten that two wrongs don't make a right. Fortunately, there are four more commissioners sitting up on this day that have a clear fiduciary responsibility to give the city manager his first ever performance review. It is your job as a commission to do this. The system of checks and balances does not work if you fail to do your job. And if you still refuse to do your jobs, that you all took an oath to perform, then the citizens of Deerfield Beach will use any means at our disposal to force you to do your jobs and give a performance review to city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to comment? Is that a yes, ma'am, you're coming up?
Well, I am, just give me a minute.
Okay, no problem, take your time.
Where I was.
I just wasn't sure if you were leaving the building.
No, no, I was just stretching, no.
Excuse me, Amy K. Tanner, 111 South, Southeast 5th Avenue. I am coming because I, I have a question, and I didn't know who to call. They've been doing a lot of work on Hillsborough, on my street, and on a lot of streets. And they put new signs in, and they're, they're lovely, they're very readable, they're big, simple, nice font. But, I noticed yesterday, actually, there's a sign that says Northeast 5th Avenue on the south corner, southwest corner of my street. Now on the southeast corner of the street, there is the old sign, which is smaller letters, not nearly as easy to read, that says Southeast 5th Avenue. I didn't know who to call about the, the street signs. I, I think that it's supposed to be on the other corner, across the street, where Northeast 5th Avenue is, or Northeast Otis Tanner Way. I can't remember where the sign was, but, uh, anyway, I didn't know who to call. So, you show me who to call.
You've already called them.
I called them, alright.
Anyone else from the public here to speak? Not seeing anyone come forward, I'm gonna close the public to be heard, the public comment section, excuse me, Mr. Hirsch?
Next section is agreements and expenditures. Resolution authorizing the use of law enforcement trust funds in the amount of $95,050 for programs and equipment meeting the statutory requirements of section 93, excuse me, 932.705, five for use of law enforcement trust funds.
Commission comments? Not seeing anyone, anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Uh, so you wanna close to the public?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Item 15, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach approving the payment of attorney's fee incurred by Commissioner Battle unsuccessfully defending a complaint filed with Broward County State Attorney's Office.
Anyone from the commission here to comment?
This is required by applicable Florida law in this case.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone come forward, I'm gonna close the public portion to be heard.
I'd like to approve, motion to approve this. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Item 16, the resolution approving submission of a safe routes to school grant application to the Florida Department of Transportation. The fund improvements for all the routes to Deerfield Park Elementary, Tetter Elementary, Deerfield Beach Middle School.
Commission comments? Not seeing anybody, anyone from the public here to comment on this item? No, we'll close it to the public. Your motion, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve that.
Second.
I'm sorry, that would help, thank you. We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Uh, the next item is, uh, item number 17, uh, is a bid protest, um, in the, with regard to the beach concession, uh, RFP. Mr. Soroka has been working on his item, I'm gonna let him, uh, work to do it and answer any questions as needed. But, as you recall, um, the city commission referred back the award of the beach concession contract for, by the selection committee, the evaluation committee. That evaluation committee met, uh, there was, there had been a concern raised with regard to the number one ranked firm and their, their ability to, to obtain a, a, the bond as required, the performance bond as required, and for that reason it went back to the committee. Those issues were resolved, and the committee made a recommendation against, recommending that the number one ranked bidder remain the number one ranked, uh, proposer, provided they provide evidence that they could obtain the required bond. They did provide, uh, that type of evidence, and therefore the recommendation to you is for an award, uh, as, as previously recommended to the number one ranked bidder. When they received information with regard to this Boucher Brothers, the present firm that holds the contract, filed a bid protest, uh, there's a bid protest procedure, there is, uh, the procedure in our code indicates that, uh, the commission can take action without taking the input, but we're recommending that you do take input. We've talked to the attorney, Boucher Brothers, they, for a specific amount of time, we, we're recommending that they be given 10 minutes, 10 minutes to outline their protest. And I know, uh, that the, uh, that the number one ranked bidder, uh, has also indicated, uh, that it's Oceanside, that they would like to speak on the matter, obviously the public can speak on the matter. So, we're recommending though that you give the protester 10 minutes to make their presentation. And, uh, Mr. Soroka will be here to respond to any questions that there be any.
Commissioned comments before we hear from the protesters? Do we do it the public first, before that, or do we hear?
I, I would, no, I, I think the public should be, the last party to be heard. I think the parties in interest are the ones that should be heard on this matter, at this further time. And just to go further, you do have all the information in your backup, together with a legal memorandum from the, uh, from the city attorney's office on this matter.
Alright.
The, is the protester here?
Yes.
Come forward, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Steve Wery, 200 East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, with the Greenspoon Martyr Law Firm. Good evening, uh, Mr. City Manager, members of the commission, Mr. City Attorney, of course, too. Um, we're here tonight to make a brief presentation, I'm not sure that we're gonna need all 10 minutes necessarily. Uh, the, the items that, that have given us concern are well documented in your backup in the, in the, the bid protest itself that was drafted by David Di Pietro and Rudy Mayor, both of whom are with us tonight with the David Di Pietro and Associates Law Firm. I'm also joined tonight by Adam Sideretti, who is the CFO of Boucher Brothers, in addition to Vindi, Vindi Grandi, who has been, you know, helping us through the process as well. Essentially, what I wanted to bring to the, the commission's attention is some concern about the, the fundamental fairness, about the manner in which the, the RFP was formulated, the way it was scored, that created some, we think, confusion on behalf of the selection committee that rises individually and cumulatively to the, to the level of a major irregularity that brings this fully within your purview to address. And the manner in which this can be addressed is by, of course, rejecting the, the recommendation of the selection, selection committee, by putting this back out for bid, or another remedial action that you may deem appropriate. One thing that we suggest is, you know, in, in looking at some of the, the prior testimony that you've heard at the last meeting, it seemed that there was, you know, possibly some mistake in terms of the, the amount of minimum annual guarantee that was proposed by the other proposer, and there was only one other proposer, both parties are here, there's nobody who's not represented who, you know, was interested. Uh, for our part, Boucher Brothers happens to be very interested in, in providing a, a higher number, that's not necessarily a higher actual number to the city, because we think that the, 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 the numbers that we provided in terms of minimum annual guarantee and percentage of revenue sharing is, is, is something that's difficult to quantify in terms of the, the total revenue to the city. Uh, it seems like the focus was actually on minimum annual guarantee and not total revenue, in fact. Um, and, uh, just in, in a matter of, you know, being fiscally prudent, Boucher Brothers had a minimum annual guarantee of $60,000 per year, which is, in, in our view, a, a number that is, you know, really gauged not to indicate what the city's actual income's gonna be, but just to, you know, be something that's reflective of what the RFP's bonding requirements were. And so we looked at that closely, and so we gauged our minimum annual guarantee in a fashion that would, you know, have a reasonable bonding requirement. Our competitors came up with a, a bid that, I'm understanding, is a minimum annual guarantee of $135,000. That's something that, you know, if we were to, you know, go back out to bid, or if we were to, you know, say have a, an opportunity for a, a best and final offer with all the parties here tonight, we could at least match if not exceed. Um, and, and that's because we're looking at this not in terms of the minimum annual guarantee, but in terms of the total revenue to the city. And when you factor in not just the minimum annual guarantee, but also the revenue sharing component in, in terms of the true-up that occurs at the end of the, the reporting periods, we end up being very close, if not higher presently, to that $140,000, $135,000 figure that we've heard from Oceanside. And so, you know, with respect, the, the pricing is, is at minimum equivalent, and then, you know, we're, we're looking at a situation where we're comparing really the quality of service and the stability of the operator. We've been happy to be, be providing services to the city for the last two years, and we think we've been doing a, a very good job. We have had, uh, you know, I think, no significant complaints, no, no significant problems that we're aware of. One of the things that, that we know was not considered in the RFP selection process and, and the selection committee's evaluation was the history that other proposers have had with the city. And, uh, you know, specifically, we know that Oceanside has had a history with the city, and that history has not always been positive. I don't wanna, you know, get into, you know, too much of, of that, because I don't think that, you know, saying negative things is necessarily a good way to sell yourself. But, again, it's, it's a factor that, um, any consumer would be considering. And, and the city is, is a rational actor, and they... and they should be thinking of those kinds of issues as well, you know, what's, what's our experience with this operator been in the past. But, the, the selection committee was, was not allowed to consider those items, and so, we would suggest that, that there could be a remedy here tonight to, to fix that, that would be short of going back and having all the proponents or all the proposers rebid. Although, if that were to happen, what I can say is that there would be really no harm to, to any of the, the proposers here, there would be no harm to the city, the, there's, there's still time left on the extension that Boucher Brothers agreed to, to the existing contract, and to the extent that even more time might be needed to accommodate a, an expanded selection process for a, kind of a redo of the procurement, Boucher Brothers would be willing to extend on a, on a month-to-month basis, or as necessary, to accommodate that. One of the things that has been our, you know, really kind of guiding light is to provide excellent service to all of our customers. Deerfield Beach is, is one of our customers, and we have a very, you know, I guess, glowing track record that we're proud of, that if you look into, you know, what our actual experience has been, not just in Deerfield, but in other cities, it's been very positive in some of the finest beaches in South Florida, and, and we think that Deerfield is, is one of those beaches, and, you know, we're happy to be, you know, raising the level of quality and, and, you know, basically being a, a part of that whole process. One of the, the last things that I mentioned that, you know, needs to be, you know, kind of focused on more is the stability of the operator to actually provide the services. We have not seen any of the, the financial information from Oceanside, and so, it's difficult for us to assess what their, their financial stability or strength is, and I don't know that the, the commission has, has been privy to any of that information, but, you know, one of the things that's of concern is, is what is the actual ability of the, of our, of Oceanside in this case, to, to provide steady, consistent, unbroken service to the city, and, you know, we're not sure what the answer to that is. And so, you know, the, these are the, sort of the essential points of our argument, and, you know, we hope that we will have an opportunity tonight to, at minimum, provide the city with a best and final offer, in terms of promoting welfare of the, of the city. We think that's a fiscally responsible course of conduct by the, by the commission. And so, I thank you for your time, and if there's any opportunity for, for questions or rebuttal following comments from Oceanside, you know, we would like to have that opportunity as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Ellen Bogdanoff, I represent Oceanside. I know that there's a protest, but what we had sent to the city is that basically we believe that the, the protest should probably be invalidated. It states that the protest must be filed within five business days of the first date, that the respondent to the competitive solicitation knew or should have known of the facts giving rise to the protest, but no later than five business days from the notification of intent to award, or notification of the recommendation of the selection evaluation committee, or any right to protest is forfeited. Arguably, the initial meeting of the commission where we asked the commission to consider an alternative to the bond requirement would be when the clock began. However, even if we use the selection committee, which you all voted to send it back to the selection committee on December 18th, the final day, considering the holiday, because we had a bunch of holidays in there, would be December 29th, 27th, not December 29th, the date that the protest was dated. It is our position that Boucher should not, did not meet the deadline, and that should be dismissed. If you don't agree with that position, I just would like to make a couple of points based on what they said. First of all, to our knowledge and to my, my, my client's knowledge, we had an excellent relationship with the city. It went out for bid, there were other issues regarding scuba equipment in which we could not provide, and that's why they went with another provider. We take issue with disparaging a company that has been in business over 30 years, serving beaches up and down the coast. They have been in Delray Beach since 2002, Boca Raton, Singer Island, and they've done a very good job. We came before the commission, I think, as you remember, because of the cone of silence and respecting the cone of silence, which I think is important, it was our first opportunity to try to present an alternative. It was just simply a business decision, as they said, you know, a business decision is a business decision to see if it would benefit us and it would benefit the city to give you the money upfront to forego the bond. We didn't see it as a critical point, because it wasn't part of the scoring. You respectfully disagreed, and you sent it back to the committee. Ultimately, we continued to pursue the bond. Not only did we give the letter to the selection committee as requested, we gave the city the bond. They have physically the bond, so I think there should be no question on our financial standing, because it is not easy. They bid their minimum guarantee, considering the bond, and only offered $65,000. We did $135,000 based on our previous experience with the city and knowing what we've given the city in the past. We felt it would be disingenuous to offer 65 or 60 or anything less than what we had given the city two years before in, in revenue. So, that's how we based our revenue, was based on what we had given the city in the past. We're excited about the opportunity, we are looking forward to servicing Deerfield Beach once again, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Mr. Mayor, I indicated you have a memo in your file from our office with regard to this protest. Yes. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I've seen the commission many times not take the cheapest vendor if it's a cost, and not accept the vendor that would bring the most money into the city. If I was sitting up with this commission right now, I would want to hear from the Parks and Recreation Director. I would want to know what the experience of the city has been with both of these vendors, since the city has experience with both of these vendors in the past. I don't know how you can make a decision unless you have the valuable input of this person.
Anyone else in the public care to comment? Not seeing anyone. We close the public to be heard. Commission comments? Commissioner Parnas?
Yes, I have a question for this group. I understand that the financial information submitted by all bidders in this case is called confidential. Why would the city break that and give you information you're not entitled to?
So, it's confidential if, if a respondent to the RFP marks it so, and we're very transparent in how we operate. We did not indicate any of our financial information as being confidential in that sense, and, you know, I looked through the, our, our RFP response, I looked, I compared that with the RFP response from Oceanside, and, you know, what I found is a lot of detail in terms of financial strength in, in our response, and specifics as to, you know, what we were offering the city in terms of the minimum annual guarantee, and also in terms of revenue sharing. By contrast, in, in the, in the RFP that has been made available to us, you know, we have not seen any of that. We haven't seen any information that relates to Oceanside's minimum annual guarantee, their revenue sharing, or their financial strength. All of that, that information has been included in, I guess, what's considered the confidential portion of their RFP response, and despite public records requests, we have, we have not been able to actually get that information, which is something that's frankly handicapped our, our ability to, to mount a, you know, as comprehensive a protest as we might otherwise, because, you know, at this point, we're really just guessing at what, you know, numbers Oceanside offers, we're guessing at the, the financial strength or not of Oceanside, you know, versus complete transparency on our side.
City Attorney?
Well, a couple of points on that. One is, the committee had access to that information.
The committee?
Two, if, my view is, this protest was filed five days after the decision was made to accept the bond. What the applicant is trying to do, what the protester is trying to do, in my view, is now bringing factors that should have, if they wanted to protest other, these things, they should have protested them after the committee made their recommendation. At this point, I think they're terribly late on that. They're, they're starting to, they're arguing everything tonight, except what they put in their protest, which was that the selection committee should have been the one to make the decision that the bond was acceptable. There was little reference to the public records in their protest, but they're arguing every, I'm listening to that, and I'm looking at the protest, and there was, there was almost no relationship between the presentation tonight and the protest that was filed. They're protesting the actions of the committee from several months ago, and frankly, there was a different, they're, they're late on that protest. In any event, I don't think, we don't think there's any merit to it, our opinion is clear on that. We've offered you that opinion, and we stand by it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the execution of the contract with Oceanside Beach Services Inc.
Chill, Joe.
This is on the protest, this is on, there was either be, or deny the protest.
Deny the protest.
Second.
Before we do roll call on that, we have a motion to, and a second to deny the protest. I do want to state, and it's clearly stated in the backup, that David Miller, our Director of Parks and Recreation, was on the selection committee, as well as Mike Brown, who is also our Head of Ocean Rescue, who I think would have some insight onto performance over on the beach, as well as Hugh Fuller, who oversees the pier and the beach concession, the beach area as well. It's very clear in the backup, it's probably not right to make assumptions. We have a motion, we have a second, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
The next is, so that's, that's a denial of the protest, and we've approved the resolution which denied the bid protest. Item number eighteen, a resolution of the City, Commissioner of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the award of RFP 2016 17-40/41 for beach amenity rental services to Oceanside Beach Services, and authorizing the execution of a contract with Oceanside Beach Services.
You're going to open to the public? Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Yes.
Good evening again. Steve Weary, 200 East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Greenspoon Martyr Law Firm. Again, this is not trying to rehash the protest, but before the city commission takes action to accept this bid, you know, we would just ask for an opportunity to offer a best and final. All the parties are here, there's no respondent not covered, and, and we're willing to do that. So, you know, that's, that's what we ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't even going to speak, sorry. That's the last word. Ellen Bogdanoff, again for Oceanside. Even if we...
I'm so sorry, just an address for the record, please.
Oh, 1 East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Thank you.
Even if we were to throw out in the RFP scoring, the, the pricing, which was the biggest component of the scoring, we would have still been ahead in terms of all of the other components of the RFP. And I know that sometimes people do, do best and final offer, but that is, was, whatever percentage that was, even if they were to come back and say, "We're going to give you $500,000 a year," if you remove that portion, we would have still been ahead, which we would have to do, because it would have to go back to the selection committee. Again, we're just excited about coming back to the city of Deerfield Beach, and we look forward to working with you all, and would appreciate your support.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Close the public portion to be heard. Commission comments? Vice Mayor?
I realize why I jumped ahead with my authorization to, I have an old agenda, which didn't have the rejection of the protest before the authorization. Are we still on public? I'm ready to authorize approval.
Nope, you can go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the approval of the contract with Ocean Beach, Oceanside Beach Services Inc.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, a resolution, and again, I, I don't know if, if there are any others, the, the rest of them, these are more rudimentary items you could adopt, nineteen through A2 on, on a vote. Of course, the public could have an opportunity to be heard, I don't know if, or, or E20 individually.
Is there anyone from the public that care, would like to comment on items number nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, or A2? Anyone? Yes.
My comment is regarding number nineteen, for the memorial park, we're asking for $3,000 grant funds from the state, I believe, the state or the county, county, for non-stationary or, you know, can, funds that cannot be used for the building of the park or anything like. I noticed that they're putting two benches in there. I'm hoping it's not two benches that cost $1,500, $1,500 apiece, because I'd like to see what those benches look like.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Close the public to be heard on these items? Want to take them individually, or? Any comments from the commission regarding this? Commissioner Drosky?
I'd like to, I don't know if we're pulling them.
You can pull item if you'd like, yes.
Twenty-one and A2.
Twenty-one and A2. So, we're going to pull items twenty-one and A2, and therefore we can approve items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two. Looking for a motion to approve nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passage unanimously. Item number twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shortly after I was elected, I had the opportunity to attend the grand opening of the micro apiary in Trade Winds Park back on April 29th, and it was a very eye-opening ceremony, one, because of the educational aspect of how important the, you know, the bee is to the environment, and especially our citrus industry, say that three times fast, here in the state of Florida. And there was only two of them at the time. Oakland Park was the first, and Trade Winds Park was the second, and I brought that back to our city, the brochure, which I still have here, and all the accompanying materials, and I indicated that I'd really like to see one here in the city of Deerfield Beach. They have to be so far apart, and Deerfield was outside the radius of Trade Winds Park, and that this was a perfect opportunity, and I'd like to, you know, thank staff, because this was not an easy, not an easy endeavor. This is not something that's done every day. They had to coordinate with the county to see what they did at Trade Winds Park, get that information, get it back. Mr. Coldwell is here tonight, and he did a fantastic job. He's with the Beekeepers Association, and, and him working with the city. I want to thank you as well for all of your efforts, for, you know, finally making this, you know, this happen. It's, it's not something that, like I said, happens every day, but our apiary is going to have an educational component to it, so that, you know, visitors can come, schoolchildren can come, so it will be an opportunity, and I'd love to be invited to the grand opening, so that's why I pulled this one, is to, you know...
To beg for an invite?
Kind of, yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Where would this be, specifically?
Next year condo, I think.
I can sell honey and it's a sideline. Do we know where it's going to be?
Yes, if I could have Mr. Bard's come down and discuss the location and a few other tidbits about this.
Thank you.
Patrick Bard's, Department of Sustainable Management, happy to answer any of your questions. First question, the apiary will be located at Central City Campus, 401 Southwest 4th Street, behind our recycling drop-off center. It's a great location, it has a barrier on the backside by hedges. We're going to build a three-sided enclosure. We have a great water source for the bees to actually fly up and out of the structure and actually use that water source, so they won't be looking for residential water sources such as pools and stuff like that. So, we're all excited about this, this program, and we're ready to get it going.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Drosky, thanks for bringing this forward. This is, this is a great addition to the city, and we really appreciate you bringing... to the city, and, and we really appreciate you bringing it forward.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, don't even get to approve my own.
Sure, if you want to.
I'll second it then.
Okay, whatever.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. All right, passed unanimously. Our last one is item number 22. Oh, excuse me, 20, A2, my apologies, A2. Commissioner Drosky, A2?
I'm just venting, I guess, is, you know, to the last second proposal that we received from our broker on this, you know, in, in my business, if I were to get a renewal quote six days before the deadline, I would be infuriated. So, my understanding from staff is this is appropriately going to be addressed, but getting a, a quote at the last second, trying to force our hand, in my opinion, is not the way to do business, especially with the city of Deerfield Beach.
City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gantz. Commissioner Drosky, I believe that Ms. Robyn dealt with that issue, and I'll let her explain what she did today, because that broker no longer will be representing the city. Ms. Robyn?
Good evening. Yes, as Commissioner Drosky stated, I was actually probably more infuriated than he was when the quote came through so late. We've been pushing on this since September, and it is the storage tank policies, so they are a little complicated. They also do not allow us to direct pay, so we have to work with a broker in order to secure the policies. My frustration with the broker this afternoon spilled over, they are going to work with us to get the final policies and underwriting and get the payments made, and after that, they will be stepping down as our broker, so we will not be dealing with them any further. We are working with purchasing on a scope of work for broker services, but we will be covered until that goes through, so.
Thank you, Ms. Robyn.
You're welcome.
Any questions, any more comments from the commission? Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue, Deerfield Beach. As a point, I would like to know, how long has that broker been doing business with the city of Deerfield Beach?
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to comment? Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close it. Do you have an answer to that question? Ms. Robyn?
My understanding is the relationship has been with Gallagher for 16 years. They previously actually did our brokerage services for benefits as well, we did an ITN, I think, two years ago, three years ago now, for brokerage services, and they did not win that, Guerin Group actually won that ITN. So, they only oversee right now, until basically tomorrow, the three storage tank policies that are before you right now, and one flood policy for a property on the beach. And so, we'll be working with our broker that we work on securing, for securing proper liability services, and we won't have that relationship with Gallagher further.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, passed unanimously.
Dan, you have the part middle business, if, if you can take this kind of as a mini consent if you want to approve it, or pull on the items, publicly, publicly, as a way to figure it out.
Anyone from the public here to comment on, first, commission, is there anything you want to pull between 23, 24, 25, 26, and A3? No, excuse me, just to 26. 23, 24, 25, and 26.
24?
You want to pull item number 24?
Just for clarification.
So do I. Anyone else?
Okay.
No, okay. Anyone from the public here to comment on items 23, anything between 23 and 26? We have a few, so, let's go ahead, um, we'll, we'll let the public come up and speak.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I'm commenting on item 26. In the backup, there was no enhanced local mitigation strategy plan for the citizens to look at, so we have no idea what you're looking to approve, and we'd like, I, I personally would like to see that before, and offer any comments before the commission votes on approval for that.
Okay. Anyone else in the public?
Joe Heinz, 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. Also on this, number 26, it talks about man-made hazards and all, all different types of hazards in there, and I just wondered if this was some kind of vehicle that the stormwater would be riding on, if this, if this would cover stormwater in any fashion whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't start the clock, I have a handout. This is on item 24, Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue.
Mr. Hirsch, item number 24 has been pulled for discussion, we'll come to that in a moment, that's all right.
I'm, I'm very sorry to be out of order.
That's okay. That's all right. So, anyone else in the public want to count one on 23, 25, and 26? Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close that then. You're looking for a motion for 23, 25, and 26?
A motion to-
Do we have an answer to the question? Commissioner Drosky?
Maybe you can help me, Mr. Mayor, my iPad died. Is it true that there's no backup to item number 26? Because if there was no backup for the public's view, I would have a concern going forward in moving it to the next agenda.
Yes, I was going to have our emergency management coordinator, Mr. Santucci, address item 26 quickly. Thank you.
Good evening, David Santucci, Assistant City Manager. The, this item here is, first, I want to explain what it is, if I may, it's a requirement of FEMA that the city commission adopt this in order to be eligible for certain grant funding that's eligible through, through FEMA. So, what, what occurs is Broward County takes the lead on this whole endeavor, and through Broward County Emergency Management, they put out a survey to all of the cities, and we, there's a, a working group put together of various stakeholders, and they go through and we start identifying what hazards exist here in the county. The easiest example is obviously a hurricane, right? But there's other things in there, cyber attacks, and there's a lot, actually, since the last time they did it, there are things like flooding and sea level rise and saltwater intrusion, and, and these sorts of hazards are growing more prevalent here in the county. So what it is, it's a 313-page document that talks about all the hazards within the county, and typical mitigation strategies that can be deployed to circumvent, excuse me, not circumvent, to, to handle these issues. Every city in the county needs to adopt this if they want to be eligible for the FEMA funding. The, the document was not attached as an exhibit because it was 313 pages long, I'd be happy to provide it, it's available on the county's website as well. The county adopted this a, a little while ago, I think it was back in December, and I think that addressed all the questions, but if you have anything else for me?
Mr. Santucci, does the city have the option debating or, or asking for changes to the mitigation strategy put forward by the county?
No, we, we do not have any options to make any amendments to this document. Again, it was done through, in coordination with a user group, a draft was sent out to, to staff both at the county and city levels and other stakeholders, including special taxing districts, hospitals, nonprofits, the United Way, Red Cross, those sorts of entities.
So, so the time for the city or citizens to speak out on this would, would have been when Broward County adopted that?
Broward County would have been the appropriate place, yes.
Okay.
And venue.
Once again, we have a situation in which the other governing bodies take precedence over us, and it's a take it or leave it type of situation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, since it's take it or leave it, I'd like to make a motion to pass 23, 25, and 26.
Second.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, we have a roll, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, passed unanimously. Item number 24. Commissioner Drosky? I'm going to have to comment myself.
I was just seeking some clarification, how the public sign up is to work, it, it, there's a, there's a reference in there, it looks like they're supposed to sign up under each individual, you know, category or grouping of categories that we have, but then I was led to believe in discussions that that's not the case, it was just for the public comment section, so I just wondered which way we're, we're going.
Yeah, as far as my opinion regarding this, and I think tonight was a good example when the, it's, we've changed the rules over several times, several times over the years. It used to be, if people remember, that if you wanted to come up and speak before the commission, you had to go to the city, city clerk's office and sign up to be put on the agenda to be able to speak on a certain item. We've opened that up now, and it's a little bit different, but tonight should be a good indication of how it's better to kind of have a little bit of order. So, if people come in for, if they want to speak in the public portion to be heard, they can fill out a sheet at the beginning of the meeting, that way we do have an order of the people who are going to speak, they'll be called by name as they come up. This doesn't mean that just because you didn't fill out the sheet, you're not going to get the opportunity to speak, I think that would be wrong. So, I think at least gives us a little bit of order on it, so if you're here, you know you're going to speak, you have something you want to say, most people usually do come here with an idea that they're going to speak, they can sign up, we can orderly call people up, as opposed to, anybody want to speak? And then we get this hemming and hawing of, I'll let them go, no, I'll go, or I'll wait, or somebody's going to the bathroom and I think they're coming up to speak, so, it's just a way of kind of creating some order with that. And as I said, I don't think we should be passing anything that says, if you don't fill out the sheet, you can't speak. I don't think that's the right way to go about it.
People come late.
People come late, exactly, people decide they want to speak, can be compelled to speak, that's fine. So, I, I think what we'll do is we call anybody who signed up for it first, after that, we say, anyone else care to come up and speak, and then close it after that, I think that would be the proper way to go about it.
I agree.
You want to make that clear, we'll, we'll, if you can do, if you want, we'll adopt it as amended with a clarification on 6.1G.
Yes, I would, I would like that clarification in there. The, the other portion of this, when we have a big-ticket item, it's on the agenda, and we know there's a lot of people in line to speak, I think it's in our best interest to also have the ability for people to sign up, that way we can call them up. This is the same way the county does it, this is the same way it's done at the Broward County Planning Council, it moves much smoother, and again, keeping the option for people to still be able to speak before we actually close it. But having people sign in is a way to kind of keep order and move things along, which seems to be the desire very clearly from this commission to move things along. The other thing is, you know, we have moved things about a little bit as far as that when the public to be heard, public comment portion is, we put it after the public hearings, and we put it after the quasi-judicial. I don't have a problem moving it back up to just behind the quasi-judicial, ahead of public hearings, or we can keep it where it's at, I don't agree with putting it all the way in the back, but that would be my recommendation, is to just put it after quasi-judicial. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that. Vice Mayor Miller, I'm going to have to open it to the public as well, so please don't make a motion yet.
I, I just-
Oh, he's about to go.
I wasn't going to make a motion. Where do you envision the sign-up sheet being in? Do we need someone from the clerk's office there to help organize that?
The clerk, clerk will take care of that.
The hood of your car.
Okay. And I, I for leaving the public to discussion like you had it tonight for a while, see how that rolls, rather than moving it, that's my feeling.
All right. Commissioner Drosky?
I'm with Commissioner Miller, I like the public comment right where it is now.
Okay. Open it up to the public. I know Mr. Hirsch wanted to speak on this.
I thought he was going to make a motion.
Okay, my name is Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue, Deerfield Beach. I had previously passed out to all of you the Deerfield Beach organizational chart. On this chart, it shows, the top of the chart is the citizens of Deerfield Beach at the very, very top, followed by the city commission, followed by a couple other boxes, and then the city manager, so I hope you all have that in front of you. I'm not sure if there have been any unknown changes to this chart, but I'm assuming that the citizens of Deerfield Beach are still at the top of the chart? If so, why is this organizational chart always forgotten by the city manager? Why is the public always being inconvenienced by the city manager? In the background material to this new ordinance, it states, "Many applications, specifically those requiring representation, will have an opportunity to come before the commission without the worry of a lengthy meeting." Isn't the city manager worried that the citizens of Deerfield Beach, who he apparently works for, will now be further inconvenienced by pushing the public comment section back into the very late evening? In a normal city, the citizen's right to be heard would be near the beginning of the city commission meeting. If the city manager is worried that the meetings are going on too long, I have a wonderful suggestion for the city manager. If the city manager would stop scheduling meetings only once per month, as the city manager did in October 2017, November 2017, December 2017, and now again in January of 2018, you may have less than 30 agenda items. The meetings will be shorter, and the city manager can back, can get back to Wellington much quicker.
Anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Now, let me just say this right now, the next comment that comes out of anyone's mouth that comes up here that relates to the personal life, as far as where they personally live, they're going to ask to be deleted. Mr. Hirsch, this is the final warning on that type of behavior.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach. I would just prefer that it be moved just behind the quasi-judicial hearings instead of further on, because a lot of people do come to have their say, and making them wait dish portion of time is probably unfair to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, James Bennett Field, 533 Northwest 3rd Way. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I would prefer to be as it was. You got a lot of old people there like myself. If you're going to keep us too late, we can't go home and take our medicine. Then you got young people who have the children, they have to go home and see that their kids get in the bed at a reasonable time. Is it that you don't want people here? You keep us so late? Let us stay as it was. People get in, say what they got to say, they go home. If they ain't got nothing to say, they go home anyway. But they keep it to the last, then you got people that are sleeping like I was back there a few minutes ago. It ain't right. People are first. Without taxpayers, you guys could get paid.
Anyone else in the public?
Joe Heinz, 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. I also agree with Mr. Bennett Field about moving a meeting right behind the quasi-judicial. I think that would, would help a lot of folks, and a lot of folks do come in and have their piece and then go home, and, and the other thing is, I think we need to have more meetings, it would shorten the meetings. I know you have to approve a meeting that runs past 11 o'clock, and 11 o'clock's really late, and a lot of meetings are going that way, especially when you have one meeting at once a month, and so, I think you ought to have more meetings, and you could, you know, kind of keep the agenda shrunk, and you could get through it a lot quicker. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to comment? Commissioner Parnas, going to close the public to be heard?
Yeah, I like when the public is heard right after the quasi-judicial. That does allow even groups who are getting awards or say their piece and want to leave, and then we can pass whatever ordinances or reject them more quickly. And I don't think it's a bad idea that we do it after the quasi-judicial. I would support that.
Thank you. Any other commission comments on, I'm the city manager, go ahead.
Yes, just quickly, one of the reasons, it wasn't just for the business interest, it was actually for the constituents, because- it was actually for the constituents, because many constituents come here to actually hear not only quasi judicial, but also on public hearings, because those have, you normally, a direct impact on the residents, sometimes businesses as well, whether it's a public hearing related to what we were talking about tonight with medical marijuana or other things. So it was much more than just looking at the business. However, when part of this city commission's request to the administration through the strategic planning process and other meetings that we've had, is about making sure that business interests are also represented, just not resident interests. So if you think about how much an attorney costs to sit out in the audience, that's part of the reason why we've placed it where it is. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, not all cities do it, that way Boca Raton itself does the public comment section at the end of their meetings. Fort Lauderdale's notorious for going into 3, 4 a.m. type, or at least past midnight type of meetings and hours, and I think there's a lack of appreciation for what it takes to actually put a meeting together, it's called efficiency. If I can stay here in this room for an extra hour and a half tonight, compared to having to come in and have staff spend all the hours that it takes to meet, to approve, and put together a separate meeting, just so we can shave off an hour, an hour and a half off this meeting tonight, doesn't make a lot of sense, that isn't cost effective for the citizens. So in many cases, that is the situation. And it's not the city manager scheduling this, all of the schedules that are proposed by the city manager are approved by the city commission, not the city manager. The city commission are the ones that approve that, it comes before it, the public has the right to speak on it. It's the same thing that we go through on everything. So it is not policy made by the city manager. Also, let's keep in mind that the people that come before us aren't just here to listen to someone use this as their personal time, to use it as a soapbox. That's great, more than willing to come here and do that, and that's fantastic. I've heard from a lot of citizens that come forward that say, I don't want to have to sit here and wait, I want to get, I am here to listen to the business of the city, not for the monkey business of somebody wants to come up here and berate on something that doesn't apply, that what it directly affects, that those citizens that have come here to listen to the meetings. Everyone has the right to be heard, we're not looking to push it to the back, we're not looking at it to be unreasonable, we're giving everybody the same amount of time. If you know you're going to come here to speak, and it's something that's that important, that you've waited weeks to come here to speak on it, I suggest also, if it's something you want to actually move the needle forward on the city, is you reach out to your elected officials and make your point that way. If there's such an urgency that you can't come here to wait, if you have to, there are plenty of people that come here that are waiting for quasi judicial, that are waiting to have business of the city conducted, that are citizens, that aren't here to speak at the public portion to comment, they are here to actually to conduct themselves in that business, they don't want to wait, we have to think about those citizens as well. So certainly, if you're a citizen and you're paying money for an attorney to sit here, they don't want to have their time wasted, so that's why we moved it up, or we moved it behind quasi judicial. We have some of you up here that want to keep it exactly the way it was tonight, and we have others that want to move it behind quasi judicial. I don't see anybody wanting to move it to the end, or anybody trying to move it to the very front. So, we're going to have to have some discussion of which way we want to go with this.
I'd say, let's try this for a few more times, like, like it is today, and we'll see how it goes. If it needs to change, we can change it next month.
Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah.
Commissioner Partas?
I think you should be flexible. If it's a light agenda, fine, then they can speak at the end. If it's a very heavy agenda, you can move it up. I think this is a decision to be made by the mayor when he puts the agenda together. You can decide, based on the issues that are going to be a long discussion a lot, where to place the public can be heard, that has nothing to do with the agendas, because that portion of our meeting are items that are not on the agenda.
I don't make the agenda. So, but thank you for giving me the credit, I'll take the credit for it, that's great. I don't make the agenda, but I think moving it behind the quasi judicial, I have no problem with that and moving forward, and doing the sign up as we've kind of reiterated on how that would work. So that's my opinion. Commissioner Miller, or Vice Mayor Miller, I know you want to keep it where it is, we, I'm not going to make a mo, I'm not going to pass the gavel to make the motion, but we need to move forward with this.
I make a motion that we do it behind, the public to be heard behind the quasi judicial.
We have a motion for that?
And with the revision to 6.1G on that sign.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I guess not.
I'll, I can count, if no one's going to make a second, I think my move would be just pointless, so. It fails with the lack of a second, we have another motion?
Leave it standing for a while.
So, so...
With the addition to the sign up.
Basically, that would be adopting the resolution as drafted with a revision to 6.1G.
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to move it, we're going to keep it the way it is, and we're going to make the adjustment to the signage.
Let's do the sign up there for a while, see if...
I'll second that.
Motion?
You've got a second, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Next item.
83.
83? Administration and city attorney on this item. Administration, city manager?
Yes, thank you. This is dealing with the, with the legal representation for our, the lawsuit that the town of Hillsborough Beach has brought against us. I believe the backup clearly outlines why we're doing this, but just for a quick summary, Conrad and Share are actually involved in other litigation that is much larger. This has nothing to do with the performance of Conrad and Share or anything else. This was a request made by Mr. Bill Shear to withdraw as our representation, therefore, I'm recommending that we use Mr. Jamie Cole with Weiss-Serota, who has represented the city in the past in a multi-jurisdictional lawsuit, where the city actually received $2.5 million in the resource recovery system litigation that we had to bring before Circuit Court, dealing with Broward County. And Mr. Cole is highly respected, and is also a very fierce litigator. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just from the attorney conference, it would be under the terms set forth therein, with all the other, and the rest of it would be based, you know, as, as you presently receive the billing and the same standards with regard to, that you're presently being charged, except for the hourly that's indicated there, which are significant reductions in the present hourly pay to Conrad Shear.
Okay. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item?
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I just have a question, has this, has our current attorney billed us for any of the work on this with, against Hillsborough? And if they have, why would they pull out? Is there some kind of conflict of interest, or do they not want to represent the town of Deerfield Beach anymore? And are we going to go completely with this new attorney?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public care to comment on the item? Not seeing anyone to close the public to be heard. Collins?
Well, no, the, of course, Mr. Shear's firm has represented us for, since 2015, so he certainly has billed us, and has performed a lot of services for that. We've had mediation, we've had 164 proceedings, et cetera, so we have been billed for that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll address it, because I don't want to, I know you don't necessarily want to, but it's very clear that he, there is nothing here that's a conflict with the city of Deerfield Beach. Mr. Shear is not leaving because he doesn't have, because of some dispute with Bill Leon, or because he doesn't like the city commission or the citizens of Deerfield. This has to do with, with another lawsuit that, you know, I'm not privy, and I'm not going to speak about it, that his law firm feels they have to deal with, and, and because of that, they would like to withdraw as our representation, because they don't think it would be fair to us. As a result of that, they've given us time, and they'll help if needed with the transition for Mr. Cole. That answers it.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this change.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle, Commissioner Drowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Partas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes. Okay. Next item?
This is city commission business, again, you could, you can move the, move these, because you read the first readings, or, or, up to you, or you can take them individually.
No, I have a comment on 29, so I'd like to pull that.
Okay. 28 and 29 are going to be pulled? Okay. Any other items that need to be pulled on this? I'm going to pull item number 30, just for, for their explanation. All right, so let's take that. Sounds about right.
Okay.
27.
Yes, 27 and 28 are somewhat similar, so I'll let Ms. Nicole Giordano start with item 27.
Hi, good evening, Nicole Giordano, Program and Innovation Manager. I am here tonight to introduce Kevin and Francine of Management Partners. Kevin and Francine led the strategic planning workshop. From that workshop, the strategic plan was generated, and Kevin is here tonight to present that plan.
Just for the record, as Kevin's walking up here, Mr. Giordano actually had quite a bit to do with putting together the action items and a lot of the other work in addition to Kevin and his firm. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Knutson, Regional Vice President for Management Partners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, pleasure to be here tonight. I want to echo Burgess's comments, we're facilitators, we, we help think about these things, but the staff really does the heavy lifting on this, and does most of the work, and we really appreciate everything that the city has done to support this effort. I wanted to be really brief this evening, just to give you an update of where we're at in the process and what it's going to look like going forward. As we talked about back in June at the workshop, when we started developing all these things, the strategic plan is an opportunity for you to take policy decisions and put them into writing in a way that helps direct staff efforts over a multi-year period. And what you really want to see happen, based on the strategic plan, is for staff to come back with ideas and actions that they're going to implement, to bring that forward, so that the results that you're looking for can actually be accomplished. And that's what we're doing tonight. So back in June, you got together and you put together a mission, and some values, and some strategic priorities. There is a slide deck that we provided that has all that in there to remind you of what those things were, but suffice to say that that's the big picture issue of where the city is headed, what you're trying to accomplish, and in what manner you want to accomplish it. The real meat of the matter comes in with all those points that you put underneath those strategic priorities, what you wanted to see get done, what the specific things that look like success for the city of Deerfield Beach. What staff has done is they've come forward with some things that are in your documentation, four action plans in four different areas, that have some specifics of what they're going to do. Those action plans will actually drive what goes into the budgeting process. So the budget becomes the inaction of your policy, it's, it's the way it brings it to life. And so the next step in this process, of course, will be the budgeting process, when they bring forward all of the different ideas that were contained in that. Now that has to be balanced against the ongoing operations and the core services of the city that need to continue, but it identifies what those special things are and how you're going to accomplish it. So I should have asked before if I had control over the slide deck here, and I do, there you go. So your mission, the city of Deerfield Beach provides quality service and innovative leadership to enhance the lives of residents, businesses, and visitors beyond their expectations. So this is kind of where you've given direction to staff, that this is what you expect from them. And in the manner in which they do that, you want them to do it in a professional way, with friendliness, with respect, inclusion, and culture, in a sustainable way, and with honesty and integrity. And there's some details that we put under those to kind of define that more carefully for staff, but that's your direction to them. And in the end, we came up with three strategic priorities, to promote and protect a prosperous atmosphere for residents, businesses, and visitors, cultivate an environment that promotes high quality of life, and develop infrastructure facilities and organizational capacity in a sustainable manner. Staff has come back with a coastal and waterway management action plan, a central core redevelopment, that's the, both the Pineapple Grove and the, and the Dixie Highway, the Parks and Recreation Capital Improvements Plan, which includes the memorial park that you probably looked at earlier tonight, and an education initiative. And these spoke to all the different areas where you had concerns and issues that you had identified through that process. If you look at these things, each one of them has a number of steps or subcategories underneath them, that they're going to put into the budget, that you will get a chance to look at later, to ensure that they align with all the things that you're trying to do. So with that said, if you have any questions about the process, or anything that I can provide further information on, I'd be glad to do so. Thank you.
Commission comments? Commissioner Battle?
Yes. Not really a comment for you, I think my comment is to be addressed to staff, I don't think I know. I read the document, and I was concerned about this central core development piece, and in that piece, it has one of the tasks is amending the land development code, and I'm wondering how that would affect the Dixie Highway corridor.
City manager?
Yes, so actually, it has nothing to do with the Dixie business residential, when we were actually going through the strategic planning process, and then the action plans, Pioneer Grove has, had not yet been fully approved, so that was just specific to Pioneer Grove, unless the city commission comes forward and said, change something with the Dixie Business Residential or other land use along...
The Dixie Highway corridor.
That, that would not be the case. But that also takes into, into account the different meetings that we've been having and are supposed to have with the DVR stakeholders, the property owners along there, not about land use change, but...
That's valid.
Yeah, about what they would like to do with their properties, and moving that forward quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public?
Glenn Sullivan, 23, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I was really surprised under priorities, that there was nothing there about financial. As a taxpayer, it, it really should focus on reducing costs, making things efficient, but all it seemed to do is address added costs. So I would highly recommend that the strategic plan also address the financial aspects, and lowering the cost to the citizens.
Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone to close the public to be heard. Commission? I think this is just a presentation, there's nothing to prove, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay.
It ties in tight.
So let's go to item number 28.
That's the resolution, that's the decision. Approving the city's strategic plan for fiscal year 2017.
Any comments for the commission? Not seeing any? Anybody from the public care to comment? Close the public to be heard, and for motion?
Motion to approve, 28, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Item approved. Item number 29?
Order the city, request the city of Deerfield Beach amending Section 34 to 35, specific knowing provisions in Section 34 to 37, exempting for the city of Deerfield Beach's authority to modify the permitted hours of operation or construction, equipment, and activity. This is still at the table, that could be placed on the agenda.
Commission comments?
Yeah, I put this in because it was requested by residents, particularly of...
Yeah, I put this in because it was requested by residents, particularly of Little Harbor. There's a number of residences going up there, and it seems to, to some extent, where all the construction vehicles and equipment disturbing the tranquility of the neighborhood, so they just want a little consideration about how late they work and how early they come in on Saturdays and such like that. And that's what this is, not only for there, but for everywhere, I think, for our neighborhoods. It's a good idea.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a reminder, we do have lights. I don't want...
Oh.
Sorry. Commissioner Battle and Commissioner Drosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read this ordinance, and Joe, I agree with you, I agree with the ordinance, but my concern with it, and I really need some clarification, I guess, from staff at this particular point, whether or not this is going to address all the noise issues that we have. For months now, almost a year, I can remember, the people who live next door to Florida House have been complaining about the noise that goes well into the wee hours of the morning. If we pass this, will that address their issue?
No. No. And this is very specifically aimed at construction. Not that we cannot try to address that, although those are more difficult to do, but this is solely related to construction noise.
So if we vote this down, then we could probably tweak it and...
Or you could adopt this and then do a separate ordinance on that, but there's only so far you can go with the type of noise you're talking about because it's, when you get into the measurements and things, it becomes much more difficult. I know what you're talking, what you're dealing with, it's going to be, it's a much more difficult area to deal with. The construction noise is very easy because of the construction activity is kind of a very clear demarcation line. With the other noises, we can do noise readings and things of that sort. The problem is the noise that is causing some of the problems, I know you're speaking of, probably doesn't measure to the extent that any, that would qualify as noise violations under our code, but we can take a look at that. But passing this does not stop you from looking at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Drosky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The current ordinance for construction, Monday through Friday, is from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. and on Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and no activity allowed on Sunday. This ordinance proposes to cut that back to, what, 7:00 to 7:00, Monday through Friday, and then 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday. And I want to thank staff for the backup with the comparison to the other municipalities around us. By making these changes, we actually bring ourselves more in line with what's going on than, except for Pompano Beach, which to me is just mind-boggling, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., but this brings us more in line with the other municipalities. The only thing in the comment that I would like to make is, it's my understanding, this ordinance has been on the books for a very, very long time, and people are probably accustomed to this, and if we do adopt this to make it prospective at some, you know, future date, you know, give it like a month or two grace period to kick in so that people are aware of this, because if this, you know, if we do this cold turkey, then people are going to say, "Hey, you know, people have been operating under this ordinance for so long." They're going to wonder why the change. So at least it'll give an opportunity for the word to get out. So if we, maybe like a month or two or three, whatever, you know, you guys want to come up with, but that would be my only comment, is to make it prospective and not effective upon adoption.
Thank you. Commissioner Parnas?
Yeah, New York has a noise ordinance. I owned a jazz club in New York, and we had to soundproof the place because the inspectors came around and said, "You're 10 decibels above the limit." So yes, it can be that other noises, we could construct a separate ordinance dealing with that so that if a strip club moves next door to you and they're blasting away at 3:00 in the morning, we can do something. But yes, it can be done.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yeah. And the reason I jump so fast is because, being a sponsor, I just thought it'd be natural I'd go first, but I forgot to... Given a little period of time, I'd say not three months, four months. I'd say I can live with modifying it to, say, the beginning of March, and then perhaps for two months more, the first violation is just a warning to people who don't know about it.
We could do that with the code.
You could do that with code enforcement. So I would, I think there's merit because people are going to just make mistakes and not know we have this ordinance. So I'd say to modify it, put it in force beginning of March, and tell our code enforcement to give people a warning first, and after that, whatever final date. So I'd like to make a motion. But do we hear from the public?
Yes. City Manager, then. Commissioner Drosky, I'm going to let the... Sorry. Public, anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Thank you. Amy K. Tanner, 111 Southeast 2nd Avenue, Otis Tanner Way. I'm not sure that I'm, I just saw noise and thought, "Ugh, noise. Maybe it's not the right kind of noise." Firecrackers and other kinds of explosive noises. I know around 4th of July, is, am I talking at the wrong time? That's not the kind of noise we're talking about, right?
No, but I think you're off topic a little bit. Can we just continue? Go ahead.
Well, I know they're going to do them on, do 4th of July. We spend thousands of dollars and do beautiful displays. I don't know why the people in my neighborhood and every other neighborhood feel they must spend their money. Two weeks before, two weeks after, they have some left over. Anyway, tonight, before I came, they were so loud, I thought it was a gun, the first one I thought was a gunshot. I don't know what a gunshot, thank God, I don't know gunshots, but that rattles the glass in my windows and me, people's windows. I don't know, maybe we could do something about, I realize we can't do anything about New Year's Eve and 4th of July, but what, the 16th of January, this is not a special day. So that was the noise I was talking about. If I'm on the wrong noise, I'm sorry, and I'll talk about it again, but...
Any comments on the actual item, as far as the hours of construction? Are you okay with that, adjusting them?
Well, I, I think that, you know, I think it was like at 7:00. I grew up in construction, so I know about construction. And there are people that don't want to listen to a jackhammer or, you know, well into the night, so probably 7:00 to 7:00.
Okay.
Be reasonable. Reasonable. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public here to comment?
Good evening. Michael Lubin, 16 Little Harbor Way, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Attorney and, of course, City Manager. Thank you for the consideration of changing the construction time. I think that'll really help many of the families in Deerfield Beach have a better quality of life and enjoy their families a little bit better. If you can't do it in 12 hours, you, I think you're in the wrong business probably on Monday through Friday. So once again, thank you, everybody.
Katie Frightog, 18 Southeast 2nd Street. My only question is, how will it affect homeowners who are doing work when they get home from work? So if I'm doing work out on my patio, if I'm doing work around my pool, and I, you know, building a bird feeder, whatever the case may be, and I'm doing it at 7:00 o'clock at night when I get home from work, how is that going, how is this ordinance going to affect me?
Anyone else in the public? We close the public portion to be heard. Do we want to address that last comment? City Attorney?
If you're making the same noise as a, you know, it's just, it matters the amount of noise that's being made, more than anything else. If you are making the same noise as a construction firm would be doing, then you'd be subject to the, would be a violation.
I don't know how that works then, because currently, the way that, what are the hours currently now?
7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
So 9:00. So have we ever had a resident convicted of doing work in their house past 9:00 o'clock? Because I think the regular noise ordinance kicks in at 11:00. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that two-hour gap, I don't think there's ever been an issue where we have residential. I think this applies...
We haven't prosecuted, I don't want prosecuting anyone.
Okay. Well, I'm sure there could probably be an argument made by someone trying to say, "Well, this is a construction site now because you're working on it." Is there a way to exempt residential? Well, we can't really do that because if you have something, somebody working on construction... All right. Commissioner Drosky and then Commissioner Parnas.
My only question is, does this require a second reading? Because if so...
Yes, it does.
That would be February 6. If we make it effective March 1st, we're giving less than 30 days, which wasn't...
You can choose the effective date. That's not, that is not a problem. I mean, you can make whatever, you know...
So I would throw out maybe April 1st instead.
Okay.
And just to go specifically, Mayor, it goes to the equipment that's being operated. That's, you know, so it's the operation of any equipment performing activity, repair, alterations, demolition work on building structures, roads, and projects within the city. So it's not who's doing it, it's the type of equipment and the amount of work.
Okay. Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, just quickly, to address Commissioner Drosky and I believe also Vice Mayor Miller's points, if this were to be approved by the City Commission even before the enforcement would start on April 1st or whatever that date would be, our Building Division would certainly be very proactive when handing out permits to make all contractors or any residents, property owners that are getting their own permits, to know what the new rules are, as, plus we would post them. And I think Ms. Medina Stewart and her team will do a good job of getting that message out as well to as many residents as possible and businesses, and will work with the Economic Development Council and Chamber of Commerce to spread the word as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Miller?
I disagree with Commissioner Drosky. I think with the communication we have, with the idea the code will just give a warning, I think the tranquility in the neighborhood that's getting six houses built simultaneously, the sooner we can get it quiet, the better. So I'd leave it at March 1, even though we won't make it official until the 6th of February. So that's a, my motion is, I'd like to advance this with putting a start date on March 1 with a warning being given to the first violators.
Okay. I will say this, kudos to Mr. Lubin for bringing this forward. This is not something he's just recently come up. He's been championing this for quite a while. I know that there was some hesitancy by past Commissions because we were in an economic downturn, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't do anything that would, you know, what construction was being done, we were happy to have it, and things are very different now, and there's a lot of work being done in the city. So kudos to him for persevering and convincing the majority of the Commission to come forward with this, so...
Can I get a second?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second with the March 1 kicking date. Is that correct? Roll call?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
And the final is ordinance, it's City, ordinance, City Commission, City of Deerfield Beach, amending section 50-80 of the city code for the fourth of a year of background screening.
Yes.
Requested by the mayor.
Yes. One of the reasons we brought this forward is because, as we know, that, you know, in the past, we were one of the strictest cities in Broward County when it came to our background checks, and there was a lot of pushback at the time just to get that. And even as we tried to take it even further, there was much debate with people, in my opinion, trying to water it down by putting in a committee that would allow people to come forward and, I don't want to, it's not protest, but to come forward with a, an appeal process. While I disagree with the appeal process, now is an opportunity actually to put that appeal process that is in place to work for us. You know, some of the things that have been pointed out, things have changed since the first time we tightened our laws, and Pembroke Pines has it in place in which not only does it mean that you have a conviction and you have to go through that, but if you've been arrested for something, we wanted to make sure that people didn't fall through the cracks, that there was some common sense applied, that even if you were arrested for something and charges were dropped or things did not result in a guilty conviction, we felt that there should be some red flags on people that apply that have those types of backgrounds. This basically, and City Attorney, I'll let you go into detail on this, but this basically gives us the ability to have a set of eyes, take a look at those applicants, and the ability to weed out any potential problems that we may have in the future.
Yes, and it provides a couple of significant revisions is what you've indicated. Now, those persons who are disqualified by virtue of arrest will have a prompt appeal available, as you say, just to get more information on what caused the arrest, et cetera, et cetera. And to provide further neutrality, the appeal will be heard by a special magistrate as opposed to a committee. So those are the significant changes in this ordinance.
And one of the things about this ordinance that is changing is that instead of a regular appeals board, which we've had, which, one of the reasons I was against it was I felt that it had the potential to be biased, to be political, and I didn't want that opportunity, I didn't want there to be an opportunity for someone to slip through just because of people on that committee liking them. By putting it to a special magistrate, it makes it much more unbiased, it certainly speeds it along. While I know this is going to have an effect on our current athletic organizations out there, there are going to be people that now, with these new strict guidelines, are going to have to go through this appeals process in front of the special magistrate just as a cursory review. But I think it's the right thing to do, and this is prompted by issues that we had recently that, you know, no matter what we put in place, nothing's going to be perfect. We're never going to have so fine a net that we're going to be able to catch every single problem with any, every single person that's going to commit some sort of crime or some sort of issue. But the more we can tighten things up without completely making it ridiculously restrictive, we should. So this is a way to kind of do that, and I think this puts us as one of the strictest cities in Broward County when it comes to background checks for our athletic leagues. Anyone from the public here to comment? Not seeing anyone from the public coming forward? Yes.
Michael Lubin, 16 Little Harbor Way, Deerfield. I think you could never be too careful when you have to deal with our children, and it would be prudent of the City of Deerfield Beach to do the best we possibly can to secure that everybody who works with our athletes or anybody else in the city, as far as students go or young people, to make sure that they have the best and highest level of adult supervision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lubin. Anyone else from the public here to comment? Not seeing anybody come forward and close the public to be heard. I will say this, what is ironic, is the City of Pembroke Pines, you know, we had an incident that came forward. I kind of took a challenge from Bob Norman saying that we had the strictest background checks in all of Broward County, and what was ironic is the one city that actually won upped us on that was Pembroke Pines, yet when we had the appeals process debate and people were pushing for that, who do you think was in the audience that came up and stood up to speak out and saying that we should have an appeals process and, in my opinion, water down our background check, but the director of Parks and Recreation for Pembroke Pines at that time? So ironically, just, I think it was last year or the year before, they just recently amended theirs, so we should keep pace with that and actually make it even better. So I'm going to ask for full support on this.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Okay. Comments from the City Commissioners? Vice Mayor, I'll start with you.
Yeah. Sorry, I forgot to put my light on sometimes, Mayor. Good job.
It's all right.
In reference to the recycling of the styrene Styrofoam, I liked the new dumpster. I met Joe down there...
I met Joe down there. He said people are very happy that it's there. And I just, I'm putting a plug in for DART. I know not everybody might like DART, but I mean, I think most of the products that are put in that dumpster are not manufactured by DART. Myself, I had a big share come to my house. It's all packing that went in there. So they are recycling other people's products for us, picking it up weekly at this point. But there's one stipulation, I don't know if I was aware of, or I just missed it. They wanted the clean Styrofoam in clear bags. And I could make a case that most people don't know it, just like I didn't know it, that our city should provide the big clear plastic bags that people come with Styrofoam to put in, to put in the dumpster. So I'm happy we're recycling Styrofoam. I think our city, it'd be a minor, minor, minor expense to the city, but I think it would show that we are also contributing something to recycling of this product that doesn't break down in the environment. So that's my only comment, and I think we're doing a good job, but please take that in under advisement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Bell?
Yes, a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I just got a text which reads, something needs to be done about people riding the motorbikes at Mill Howard Park. They are destroying the park. They ride the bikes on the walking track. It's shameful. So please take care of that for me. I want to thank Mr. Miller and his staff, as well as the following community people, Terry Scott, Irene Billingsley, Elizabeth Carr, and Bishop Patrick Kelly. I think this MLK celebration was that and more. It was well done, and I appreciate all the effort that went into it. For the citizens, then, January 25, will be the District 2 meeting at the Hillsborough Center at 7:00 PM. Please come out. If you don't live in District 2, you're welcome. It will be the first time that we're going to unveil the plans for the Bran Hildur Richardson Knows Memorial Park. Our staff has done a great job. Mr. Miller, Mr. Hoyt, Mr. Power, who else is in on that area?
Kara.
Kara Petty. I mean, I saw it, and I, it just almost brought me to tears. So please come out if you want to see the unveiling of the plans that we have for the memorial park. And finally, I haven't heard back yet, Eric, from my palm trees on Dixie Highway. Please keep me up to date on that. I don't know what the man was trying to do. I think he's trying to create an urban agricultural area, and we can't let that happen. Thank you.
You want to share?
Well, okay.
Yeah, before Mr. Power goes, I just wanted, before you say anything, this is probably a code compliance case, so Andy should, is this something that we should just speak to Commissioner Battle?
If you're concerned, yeah, it's probably, yeah, I don't even know what you're talking about, but just by your reaction, I think it is something we should probably talk about probably first.
It happened over the weekend, and code compliance has been all over it, so, yes.
Just keep me up to date.
Yeah, we'll talk to you.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner? No. Commissioner Parnas?
I just want to thank all the people that called and sent me cards while I was ill. Obviously, I'm back in full voice. And again, I want to thank all the people that wished me well, and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Drosky?
I likewise want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, whoever's left out there. And then I want to say, what a fabulous Martin Luther King Day parade we had on Monday. It was well attended. I ran out of candy in my car to pass out to all of the children. It was a great event. I think the parade, you know, showed the unity here in Deerfield Beach coming out, and I think Dr. King would have been proud of the parade that we offered that particular day, and I was glad to be a part of it. February 3 will be before our next commission meeting. That's a Saturday. That's my next office hours here at the City of Deerfield Beach, from 10 to noon. There was also an article in the newspaper on December 14 that outlined the Hurricane Irma debris cleanup, and it set forth that most of the municipalities in Broward County did not finish until December. And Miami-Dade County probably continued into January, and Monroe County, as the mayor said, will be going on for a long, long time, actually. So this, one more opportunity to, kudos to staff, to Chad, to all of your folks, the city manager, again, for the great job that was done here in the City of Deerfield Beach. This just is more proof of the great job that we did here with the debris cleanup in our city. And last but not least, it's my understanding that under consideration is House Bill 17, I don't know if Chris Moore is still here, but, which is an attack on the CRAs again. I'd like to put on for the next agenda, you know, a resolution opposing House Bill 17 and the attack on the CRAs. I don't want to do it at the end of the meeting when there's no one here and there's no public notification, but if we could put that on for the next agenda. There's probably going to be a lot of things we're actually going to oppose in this legislative session, but that's, that's one that's being, one of many that's being considered. So with that, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Couple things. FDOT has announced that the northbound I-95 off-ramp to eastbound Hillsborough Boulevard is going to be closed on January 22 from 11:00 PM to 5:30 AM. So please make sure, anything we can do from the city to make sure we get that information out to everyone, but for those of you in the media, if you could make sure we get that information out. I do want to praise what DART is doing with the Styrofoam recycling. I also had a conversation with a resident who said that when we have our hazardous materials drop off, and, how often do we have that?
I'm not sure.
We have it once a month. One of the issues that we have is, and then part of it's either communication, I don't know if we can expand it to doing it, you know, four times a month or every weekend, but one of the issues we have is that when someone doesn't realize it's not the weekend to bring that, and they've loaded up their vehicle with those materials, and they show up, and they're turned away, there's a good chance that those materials aren't exactly going to be put away to be brought back on the proper day. They're probably going to end up where they shouldn't belong. So maybe we could look into the cost effectiveness of expanding that beyond one day, or at least, at the very minimum, do more public outreach to make sure people are aware on the days they should do that. I know we have a Cadillac service when it comes to a lot of this recycling and our garbage pickup. I don't, I'm not saying we need to take it to the level of a Tesla model, but, you know, we should possibly consider that. I do want to praise staff for the Martin Luther King Parade. It was fantastic. Of course, one of the byproducts that we have with all of the parades that we do is traffic concerns. When we reroute traffic, and we obviously have to go to, excuse me, FDOT, to pre-approve what our traffic patterns are going to be, we need to make sure that whatever alternative streets that we're using, that we have full enforcement of law with the police and everything that we can do to limit and, I actually think we need to kind of reconsider this a little bit, and look at it a little bit differently on where we redirect this traffic. But we, at the bare minimum, we need to make sure we have strong enforcement of the rules and the laws about having all of these types of vehicles coming down the road, and certainly making sure they obey the laws. And it certainly should not be a complaint getting, I should not be getting a complaint that one of our city vehicles is one of the ones speeding down the street. So that's something for us to look at and please consider. The other issues, the plaza that is directly across from Deerfield Mall, where Aldi's is at, there was an issue with lights that were installed by Ruby Tuesdays. They've tried to mitigate that by planting trees. One of the problems that they did, though, is they planted black olive trees. Those black olive trees are now leaning over into the residents' yards and causing severe damage to their property. So, you know, one thing, I don't think we should be approving site plants of black olive trees, but we should, you know, do what we can to try to address that issue. We also had, some of you may remember, we, last year, we tried to, we attempted to do something a little bit different with our burglar alarm registration. And our, you know, people would get, used to get a decal, register their burglar alarms with the city. We took a different approach. We had an outside company doing that. Quite frankly, that didn't work out the way it should have. It is my understanding right now that we have kind of suspended the registration with the city. We're not requiring people to do that, but many people are requesting to do that. And I know city staff, times have changed. There are multiple different ways that people are monitoring home security for their houses. So I know we have to kind of update our laws. They're a little archaic, so it's not your traditional alarm companies like it used to be. So, but we need to move that into place, and at least, the bare minimum, again, is public outreach to make sure they understand what the current rules are and what status we're in right now, if we can do that. Did you have a comment on that, City Manager?
I was just waiting.
Okay. No problem. All right. I'll let you go ahead. I'll let you-
Okay, yeah. Just quickly, yes, we are aware of that, and we will be bringing forward something that encourages residents to actually do it, rather than penalize them for not doing it, and making the registration fee nominal or nonexistent at all for the resident. For the businesses, it's much more of a larger and more complex issue. So we're reviewing both business as well as resident, and hopefully we'll be bringing that forward in, I don't want to say a couple months, but hopefully later this summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The other issue is, I know Commissioner Battle has brought this up, but again, our lighting all throughout this city since the hurricane, there's a lot of street lights that are out. And if you go down Powerline Road between 10th Street and Hillsborough, on the west side, along Quiet Waters Park, all of those lights are out. It is extremely dangerous over there. So, and I've seen it in other areas of the city, so if we could make sure that we try to do everything we can to get those lights restored, it is a hazardous situation, in my opinion. I do want to praise a resident, Sarah Moran, today, who alerted the city to what looked like milk pouring out of the 72-inch drain at the King Fisher Canal. Turned out, what that did is it signified that there was a water main burst at a different location. It was sand and silt that was blowing through there, so it wasn't anything hazardous. But because of that swift action, we were able to identify the problem. Tom Good and his team were able to get out there and get that fixed. So thank you very much, Mr. Good, for doing that. One thing I want to address, and this is, again, rumor control, because I think it's really disappointing that people would twist facts, quite frankly, flat-out lie, and be so over the top to try to create a public health scare by trying to insinuate that our city drinking waters, there's an actual issue or problem with it. There are people that are going far to say, is there cancer-causing agents in that? They need to bring in Aaron Brockovich, and that this is a major problem within our city. This is absolutely absurd. I understand what people are having concerns. I understand people having questions. But to stand there and actually try to create what I would call a panic with inaccurate information is extremely disappointing. They've tried to reference a website, which is an independent organization that takes a look at some of the, some of the actual problems in our city water. When you look at it, let's make this very clear. The City of Deerfield Beach does not have a problem from a health standpoint with our water at all. Broward County highly, it inspects us on a regular basis. It's highly regulated. We don't have a problem with the EPA. We don't have a problem with Broward County when it comes to any health hazards with our water supply. That is absolutely not true if anyone tries to say that. Now, we have failed, well, excuse me, we have had two boil water alerts, one in 2013, one in February of 2017. Compared to other cities, that's a pretty small amount. Both of those situations dealt with water that was at the direct well level, all right? Because of that, we put out our public notifications. Everybody knew about it. It's in the news. It's highly reported. Again, this is a highly regulated utility. And I can assure you, there is no, whatever conspiracy theory somebody wants to come up with and try to say, well, Broward County, the Health Department, this is a cover-up, what are they trying to do? It's absolutely absurd. They would have, it would not be in their best interest to go ahead and try to cover for the City of Deerfield Beach, should there be any problem within our drinking system. And what I find disappointing is, people that try to say they've researched this, and they found this website, this ewg.org, that allows you to, it's an advocacy group out of California, where you can plug in your zip code and take a look at the tap water evaluations for your city. And when you take a look at that, the one person that's out there that's really trying to push this forward is a non-resident. Person lives in Plantation. And if they would plug in their own zip code, they would actually see that the Plantation water supply rating, according to this website, is actually worse than ours. So when you look at it, they say, well, there's contaminants above a health guideline. There is no health guideline, really, that's put out there. Certainly, the federal government has its rules and regulations, but they're using their own separate guidelines to determine this. So when they say, well, if you look, go to this website, it'll show that the City of Deerfield Beach has contaminants that have been found. There have been two there are contaminants above health guidelines, and five detected contaminants besides that. Yet, that sounds bad, and I understand that. But if you look a little bit further, you kind of realize, this is the norm in most cities. And it is nowhere near any sort of health risk level, not even close. City of Plantation, which this person, Mr. Joe Levey, who does not live in this city, does not own property, but seems to be the leading person to push this, this idea forward, if they would look in their own zip code, they have three contaminants tested for the City of Plantation above health guidelines, and four detected contaminants additionally. Pompano has three and six. Weston, four and five. Hollywood has four and 11. Boca Raton, three and six. What do these numbers mean? Not much when you really look at it. To give you an idea, the national average, for one of the things they're trying to say, is hexavalent, which they say is a cancer-causing agent, which is naturally occurring many times, that you'll find. The national average for having it in your water supply is .797. Our city has 0.180. We're not even close to the national average. All of this is made up because someone saw a picture and actually saw rust at the water plant. The rust that they saw is an issue that's at the earliest part of the plant. It doesn't affect our drinking water, and I assure you, if it did, Broward County, the EPA would be coming down on us. You would know about it, and you would know about it very loudly. It's wrong for people to try to spin something simply because they don't like who's sitting up here, to go ahead and make that kind of hay and create a public panic. So residents, please rest assured, there's nothing wrong with your drinking water. I live in the City of Deerfield Beach. My children live in the City of Deerfield Beach, as well as my family. I drink the water every single day. There's not a single problem with it when it comes to a health, safety issue. Anybody else that says that is inaccurate. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.